Follow the March 7, 2023 Board of Selectmen meeting to the board. Thank you and welcome. We'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
United States of America and to your Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty just as strong.
First item on the agenda is the Veterans Outreach for Services. Have someone here for that? Hello? Great, how are you?
Wonderful. Thanks for taking it even early.
Sure, just please introduce yourself for folks on the phone, in TV, and in the room. Thank you.
I'm Pat Morris, so I'm the Veterans Agent here in Upton. And thank Joe for inviting me. I've been a Veterans Agent here for five years. So it's a, I've met all of you individually, but it's nice to meet everybody together here. So Joe asked that I just take a little update. What do we do and to tell you about an outreach program that we're going, that we're planning on doing at the end of this week? So I serve both Upton and Hope Dale. And in doing that, we have an arrangement, the towns have an arrangement between one another. What that arrangement is, is that I house myself here. So Upton provides me with a computer and I use your photocopy machine. And Upton and Hope Dale then pays for my dues, which I pay to belong to Veterans Association so that I can get the education and the training. And then I use a software program that costs $500 a year so that I can file federal VA claims and they pay for it. So it balances out and if you've ever seen their town hall, they have less than zero space. So I appreciate the fact of being here. So I'm part-time and part-time in both, okay? And the arrangement that I have here is to work eight hours. Sometimes it's more, but if it is, it is, you know, we don't even worry about it. It works out.
Thank you.
So we do basically two things, or I do two things. One, in fact, the vast majority of my time is doing FED benefits. Federal benefits are getting people into VA healthcare, filing claims, death benefits, education benefits. I meet with anyone from the town here when they're discharged from the service, even if it's National Guard or something like that, when they come back and, you know, we talk about what they can do. As an example, today I had a woman who was, she was a widow, but she passed away. And she was receiving aid and attendance, so I helped her family file to tell the VA that she had passed away. I had two veterans here in town, one Korean, one Vietnam, who came in because they wanted to get into the VA healthcare system. Both of them want hearing aids, which is, everybody wants a hearing. And so we just, there's a lot of paperwork involved in doing this. I mean, you work with the state, so just compound that with that. So then the other side is Chapter 115. Chapter 115 are state benefits that go to lower income and they'd be the veteran or a veteran's spouse if they're a widow.
Okay.
So those are needs based, so there's a fairly low threshold to get in. But if they can get in, the basic thing that it pays for is health insurance. And if they're eligible for Medicare, it pays for Part B. But normally if their income is that low, I can get them into other state programs. And so we get the state pick up that, so it doesn't cost the town. Anything we do there, it's reimbursed to the town 75%. So I also do do a lot with, people always come in here, want to know if they can get a real estate exemption. So you might be interested to know that here in Upton, 52 families receiving some reimbursement. It's a total of $63,000, but the town has reimbursed 100%. So it's good to get them in there.
Yeah.
We have five families who get a full exemptions, 100%. And in order to get that, the veteran has to die from a service-connected disability. We have 22 who are getting $1,000, so that means they're 100%. And we have 25 who are getting 400, which means it's 90 or less. And there, my budget, your budget for 115 is $25,000 and we don't expect to have to spend that. In fact, we just went down, we had four people receiving something and it went down to three today because they didn't do what they were supposed to do. There are 75 families here in Upton as of October 2022, which was the last time we got their report. 75 families that are receiving federal benefits. This is not retirement compensation. Probably $1.4 million annually. So that's money that comes in and I'm sure a lot of it gets used right there in town to pay their taxes. So what was it that Joe and I talked about is doing? This is one of these things where, that's intentions, but I didn't realize how big it was until I got into it. We have 340 people here in town who checked off on a veteran. They did the census. So this is a statewide thing that Veterans Agents are trying to do all over the state, which is to reach out to these people and say, hey, are you aware of the fact that we're here? I had a gentleman come in today, 83 years old, and he said he knew there was a Veterans Agent, but he was in here to do something else. And he saw me sitting there, he says, his quote was, "What the devil do you do?"
Yeah.
On as well. Joe asked the same question. So after I talked to him, he ended up saying, "I'd like to get into the VA healthcare system" because he does qualify and we can use that to pay for his medications, which have very high hospital rates, same learning. So it's just one of these things about people don't, you know, we don't know. So anyway. And so we're sending out a letter and so we, I've now stuffed all the envelopes, I put all the stamps on them. And I'll leave you with a copy and so it's going to go out to everyone who states that they are a veteran. And it just simply, we're here, call us, stop by, call me, and if we can help him, that's who we're here.
Yeah, that's great.
Somebody died sick and I took more than the time that I was supposed to.
Not at all. This is really sort of, the fact that there's so many people out there that aren't taking advantage of it, but qualify, they may not even recognize that there's, you know, support available for them that they've earned, is to be able to be of aid to them.
Right. By you coming for the board, it gets a chance to get it out there and there's folks at home watching. So more and more people will learn just by your presentation.
Thank you. And I also want to throw in an unsolicited thank you to the chief here, who, when he gets invited to Gillette Stadium, not for football games, but the Police Association. And he's been very good about getting coats and other things and we give those to the Veteran Center in Worcester. So he's done that for several years now. So we appreciate the help from the Police Department too. Happy to do it.
Wonderful. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Great.
Any other questions?
Great. No, I have none.
Okay. Hey, nice to meet all of you.
Thank you.
Nice to see you again.
Anything else we can do to help you? Thank you, Mr. Morris. Pat, okay. Thank you, Pat. All right. Thanks on the agenda. Steve Bradley, please. Welcome.
So I asked Connor, show us who are all five friends to come tonight as well as we talk about the concrete emergency management plans. Connor was crucial in helping me put this plan together. We wanted to add in meeting without, you know, RHEMA rep to make sure that we have all the elements of the plan. So our last update, we believe somewhere around 2011, 2012. So this was one of our priorities. If you have the emergency management plan updated, it's state. So if you had a chance to read the document, it's basically a framework that all of our department heads and emergency managers will use when responding to various types of emergencies throughout the town. Kind of outlines what everybody's responsible for, talks about different aspects of the plan as far as declaring an emergency, going through that process. So this will be loaded into our web EOC system. It's a software platform that emergency managers use throughout the state. And we'll dovetail with some of our other plans that are in the system. And also we use that system to request assistance from the state. Any questions on the plan?
Can you go first?
I either want to be, please.
Okay. I read through it for the most part, skipped a few paragraphs in there. There's a section on shelter in place or order of evacuation. And I had noticed that it gives some centers where residents could go, but those centers are all in town. So it mentioned the schools and of course the senior center, which is our current senior center. Obviously that will change in the near future. I think that was one thing that I had a question in my mind and I'm thinking maybe residents at home may as well, was if a threat's coming from the east, we need to evacuate for whatever that reason may be. Obviously the schools aren't going to be a good place to evacuate. So it'd be nice to see if we could develop something where, you know, if we have a stage set up where, okay, Worcester would be the next, or maybe it's Springfield. If the threat's coming from the west, would we go to Framingham or maybe?
So that system is really in place with BEMA. So if, they will list all of their shelters and warming centers in the web EOC. Depending on what our issue here in town is, we may be telling people to go to a regional center. Maybe in Worcester, maybe in Northbridge, it could be in some other town or district to seek shelter. So that's, that's part of the BEMA plan.
So you mentioned that somewhere where it would dovetail with their plan and it would give, at least to give residents another option of where they may be able to go.
Correct. So when we open a shelter or a warming center, we put that information into web EOC and emergency managers throughout the state can see those and we can see the other ones as well. So if we have issues, perhaps we can't open our centers because of what's going on here in town. We have alternatives and we can push that information.
Great, John from State. So first of all, thank you very much, obviously, for all this work. It's something that is comprehensive and important for the town and for the people here. Thank you Connor for all of your work and help and support getting the work done. It's awesome. For folks that don't have sort of, don't have ready access to or haven't read through this, you know, sort of what are the, what are the highlights for them? Like I look at things like, you know, who's in charge if there's, you know, if there's an emergency or how do we link with other agencies in the state? Or how does the incident commander coordinate the departments within the town, right? There's references to Board of Health, Animal Control, sort of all these connections. So I think it's important for people, what I want people to understand is sort of the breadth of planning that's involved in keeping them safe, in all of that sort of support and service and what they're getting from their safety services.
I think the most important thing is, as we do have an event, could be a planned event, could be some type of natural disaster, we open up our Emergency Operations Center. And then we would have the department head or representative from each of the departments or the people that evolved in this plan would, and basically we would work as a team, take care of whether it's Board of Health issue, it could be animal control, evacuation shelters, it could be a police issue or fire issue. We have parties, stakeholders in the EOC, we can make decisions. Obviously the town manager, the emergency manager would be there, would be in charge of the overall event with input from all of them.
Yeah, yeah. An analogy that people may sort of think about, right? Is obviously when something happens on a national level, you hear about the Situation Room, right? So our Emergency Operations Center is essentially the local version of the Situation Room. So the key leaders in the organization in the town and local government, emergency services, go sort of come into one place, all communicate, are together and have all these linkages and connections, both up to the state and also across the town within the department. So really good, really good to know. Great. Anything else?
Thank you for all the hard work, Connor, Chief Asham, and you chief. It is a very comprehensive plan.
Yeah, I do, I do actually have a question. Not going to let you off that easy. Since I got some other help here, we're going to press you a little bit. As I read through, and of course this ties in with the lead into this and of course the debacle over in Ohio and of course another train off the tracks in Ohio. So residents have expressed interest to the board and hopefully have been made aware of it, that people are very concerned obviously with the railroad that we have here in town and the expansion projects and whatnot. So in the plan, I think it's page 49 and 50, there's a discussion or an explanation about the hazardous materials technician, which would be of course someone in town that would be familiar with and how to mitigate issues with respect to, I'm assuming, we're not reading, maybe I'm reading into it too deeply, but chemicals?
Yes.
So I guess my question is, do we have anybody that we think right now is ready for that role? Or do we look at this and look forward and say, okay, you know, we're going to train someone as Connor, let's say? And this is going to be something where this would be his specialty or at least he would have some familiarity with an issue that may arise with something that's being handled with that?
Sure. So we're fortunate that we have a lot of firefighters and people that have basic hazmat training and experience. We also have a professional engineer on our staff who is very familiar with hazmat planning and so forth. But we also use that, the state hazmat team to respond. So whenever we have a hazardous material incident, we would start managing that situation. We obviously call on the state hazmat team, part of the experts, but also come to the scene, how it was managed in that situation. We also have the ability to send more of our firefighters to advance hazmat training, which is something we'll be looking to do over the next couple of years, especially with the Grafton-Upton Railroad expansion project. So that's something that we're going to get into next, to talk about where we are with that project and some of the challenges that we have in the future being prepared.
Okay. Very good.
That's a question.
Notes? Okay, we can transition to the DRR update.
Yeah, so Grafton-Upton Railroad, as you know, we've been working on this project for quite some time, starting in late 2019. We work closely, this is our public safety team. So we have representatives from fire, code enforcement, emergency management, police and DPW, working with the Grafton-Upton Railroad for review on the design, construction, and commissioning of their expansion project. So their expansion project basically is a transloading facility. So we have products that come in by rail and they are transloaded into different vessels. It might be 55-gallon drums, totes, containers that generally trucked off of site. So the project's divided into phases, Phase 1 and 2 are the construction of the main warehouse, transloading facility, and the associated tanks. Now this project's a little bit different than other projects we do because the railroad has some exemptions from the federal government, but they don't have to apply for building. So the typical project, we would get the plans, do our comments upfront before construction starts. This is a little bit in reverse because of, you know, they don't have to meet that, getting that permit upfront. So Phase 1 consisted of mainly the construction, startup, commissioning of the transloading system for acids, bases, oxidizers, and that's substantially complete in operation. So those are the commodities that are less of a concern because of the material product. Phase 2, which consists of final system design, construction and startup, and commissioning of the transloading system for flammable and construction liquids is still underway. The design of the automatic fire suppression systems for the bail car and motor carrier systems. These systems have a limited operational capability for testing and commissioning. So when we talk about the fire protection system there, we have gone through a set of designs with them, letting them know what our expectations are, is to design a system, you know, that has very little room for error. You know, obviously concerned about mechanical failure, human failure when transloading items. So we're requiring that they put infrared detection, flame detectors at the transloading points and also to have firefighter foam coverage and canopies around that in case there's some type of fire that could be put out. Firefighter foam has its own difficulties and problems. That's also a hazardous material once it's used. Fortunately, that's probably the lesser of two evils when we're dealing with chemical fire. We expect that a new foam will be available in the coming years. It will not have all of the PFAS issues with the foam. Perhaps Dan can explain a little bit better for me.
Yeah, at this point with the foam systems down there, because of the flammable combustion components that they are going to be transloading and moving from rail cars, tanks, and to, from a motor carrier truck to totes or drums, we are in a situation with a, with the foam systems that are fixed in the building and outdoor different site elements, they have to use the flooring, the foam that's got the flooring-based material in it. So we're going to be in a situation like many facilities where we have to break the industry, which is very close to releasing foam concentrates that do not have the PFAS-based materials in it, in those flooring contaminants that do make the foam itself hazardous. But we do need that because that's what's going to effectively suppress the fires for the materials that are out there. So we're waiting for the approvals to come forward. Facilities such as this will end up getting on a list and being a priority and getting replacement foam. It is going to be in projects on the railroad because there will be actual changes to the foam systems that are already done, that only have been there for a few years. Just, it's the timing, it is what it is. So when they get that to switch over, that'll be another thing that we want to work closely with them and our agency partners. So we've been working with the state hazmat team, as the chief had mentioned. We've met with the director hazmat in DFS a few times and really have started to put together apparently comprehensive approach. The railroad's been very good because they have really partnered with us, I'm predicting you've been going along the way, including getting to a situation where we've talked about stockpiling certain materials so there wouldn't be a shortage or something. We would be in an emergency and not be waiting hours for something that could be actually staged at some of the facilities. So it's kind of a very instructive effort.
Yeah. And just to clarify, if I may, and when you talk about stockpiling, you're talking about stockpiling safety chemicals and things that can help suppress any potential risk issue that's also there.
So we would have to be able to be able to, unfortunately, if you fall firefighting foam, it does actually get consumed throughout an incident, so you have to continually maintain. So we may be in a situation where we'll be using foam for several hours. And also just stockpiling everything from, you know, a lot of the booms and the pig, what they call, that they start throwing materials to, could be sawdust and a whole host of things.
Yeah. And then also I know there's a lot of concern around, you know, PFAS and things like that. That's obviously a very important topic and something, there was just an article in The Globe today about waterways in Massachusetts that have various risk levels with their fish and all that. So given that, I think when we went on a tour there, one of the things that they talked about was that they really have a way to capture the byproducts of any accident that may occur. Does that apply to this fire suppressant material as well? Like I know they have those big concrete sort of drainage areas, for lack of a better word, that go into a particular area or tank. Is that?
The entire site setup, the intersection falls by the findings of chemicals that are captured on site. So everything is captured and goes through large, between the surface and the actual bots themselves. We're talking 60,000, 70,000 gallons of chemical and foam and firefighting water captured. So there are those systems in place.
Yeah.
Our emergency planning is, and advice, and from experience myself in other facilities, we're going to have plans in place to deal with, if there's more, where's it going? How we plan for it? That's what we talked about, some of those stockpiled materials. So we have to have a game plan, coordinating with, I'd say not just our local resources, but the state to make sure we're prepared.
Yeah, that's been a big part of our discussion of, okay, where does this runoff go? How is it captured? And then how is it removed after it's captured? So those are some of the things that we talk about in our planning phase. Discuss, do they have the equipment to remove that material?
Yeah.
So that's all part of the plan.
Yeah.
Now, so that's Phase 1 and 2. There's a future Phase 3 concept that's been shared to the public safety team in Grafton-Upton Railroad, which would be, you know, additional tank farms doing the same purpose of transloading. Now, they've agreed with us that if there is a Phase 3, that's a separate project, that will have separate approvals. And if we get to that point, we'll go back to just where one that's part of the safety initiatives that need to take place with that program. As Dan mentioned, we'll work on emergency response plans, emergency management plans, and do quarterly and annual observation inspection programs for the facility. So once the yard gets up through Phase 2, stops, starts operating some of these combustible materials on inspection programs as well, to make sure that every, all documentation's in line and they're doing exactly what they proposed throughout, throughout the planning phase. Fire EMS, emergency management, working on pre-incident plans, coordinating with the Grafton-Upton Railroad, our state partners, as Dan had mentioned, to begin the process in goal of establishing annual, bi-annual, tri-annual emergency response training drills for Upton and our mutual aid partners, so we have an, you know, the reliance on assistance. So, you know, we envision being ready with drills at that facility and responding to that. They encourage that as well.
I do have a quick one. There was a mention, as you had brought up, there are these basin-type areas, concrete, and they have a known capacity of what they can hold. So as Phase 2 kicks in, or now that, we'll forget about Phase 3, but we'll talk about Phase 2. And also with spur tracks, is that whole accumulation of, whether it be wax or chemicals or acids or whatever else are in those cars, do we know if now those basins have the ability to capture, you know, anything at all that can be spilled? I guess are they expanding? I guess in a roundabout way, they?
If they go to a Phase 3, they would have to have additional areas to capture, especially under the transloading positions, to capture any spills of material. Now for the site as a whole, that's probably.
Yeah, Phase 2, then we've been very insistent about suppressing all of the combustible and silvable transloading operations. So that truck canopy that's over there that people can observe from, that's adjacent to the tanks and those rail spurs, they're just going to be active automatic fire suppression systems on those. So in the spurs, we've been working with them. That spur area is outside of the larger containment area that you folks had had a tour over a year or so ago. But they're putting together a plan to actually have a containment along the spurs. And that's one of the things that we talked about, that the chief mentioned about Phase 3 is, we have to take a look at what the impact is for that future phase. Like I said, that's not something we'll We have to take a look at what the impact is for that future phase. Like I said, that's not something that they're looking to do now, but they were planning for in the future. And we have that. So it's important to actually. Except we're working through that we're not, there's a limited. We've agreed to have a limited amount of cars and transloading done for that operation. Until phase two is complete. And once the, once we get away from the fluorine based foam. It probably won't be as significant of an issue, but right now that has been a concern, the fluorine based foam. But generally, that site as a whole had a lot of failure. Because of the larger risk planning that that chief Bradley had talked about, that the emergency management team has been having discussions about like how do we go. Maintain all of the, all of the chemicals in the soda water if there was an extended operation like that. So we're working on that with them. And as I said, that hazard would be reduced with fluorine based foam those way. But in general, we still want to have a plan to capture large amounts. And this is where the the resources become regional and state level.
Yeah. It's, I think it's also important to recognize that, and and I guess I'll state this more to the question, right? There is, there is and are very comprehensive and robust existing. Safety and emergency response plans for the operations at the railroad. It's not as though. We're doing something new that hasn't been done before. They're they're changing their business, they're growing, they're expanding. So we're updating the existing plans to account for that expansion and growth. So I think it's important that people don't misconceive that we we are building something or we're working towards something. We've we've got coverage for what's happening there now. We're growing the plans and the response plans with the expansion and the growth of the of the business there.
Yeah, I think to add to that, there's an expectation at the industry level about standard of care for chemical safety. Here from preparedness. But we're we're taking a very, very proactive role there.
So and I'll just segue into the article that you're gonna be reviewing, the F C. Which the article is looking for like twenty five thousand dollars. Consulting third parties to look at our plans, to look at. The plans that the railroad has and give us some guidance to make sure that we're looking at best practices. Making sure the calculations are correct, whether it's the calculation on twenty minutes of foam for event. That's required or some of the drainage of of tanks, all the technical information. We want another set of eyes on there to make sure that that we're not missing anything. That we can ensure public safety and also to help us with our response plans to make sure that we capture everything. We're ready and prepared. Hopefully, we never need it. Safety of the community is paramount. So that's why we're looking for for that article and we envision using that article. Over a period of time, not just one budget cycle, but probably two or three as we go through this expansion project. And that, you know, is done correctly and prepared as well.
Great. Thank you. Any questions?
So the town is very lucky to have people like Captain Lazar and Pat Roach. They are probably. In the, in this area, two of the most leading people to know about. All systems. Also with Dan, Dan's contacts on the outside. Basically, the thirty five people we've been talking to, we've been getting. Free advice for a while, but it's getting a little bit more in depth with them. But having those people really does make a big difference in the hazards down there. There's always been a lot of talk about the railroad. I always say that. You just talking about the Ohio incidents. The one thing we don't have is the speed of the trains. Those are trains that are going at a very good speed. And they're big trains, a lot of less control. We're gonna have a problem will be with the trans loading operation, which we've had one. And the trucks, trucks. So it may be not an incident specifically at that yard. It'll be a truck on, you know, Opington Road or something like that. So that's, we're even looking at that. It's not just. A plant for there and it's a plan, right?
So and. She brings a good point. You know, we talk about some of the derailments that we see. Across the nation, you know, this is the lowest speed rail, so the. Potential is less. It's not nonexistent, but it is less than some of those others. We also received some questions about some of the chemicals that are down in that facility. We'll be updating the list that's on the town manager page. Tomorrow to be able to update that list. The railroad provides a list of their commodities every year. And if they do change commodities in one of one of their tank farms. That has to be approved by the tank, has to be approved by the Department of Fire Services, we sign off on it. So that list will be available on which I'm interested in the chemicals that are being used now.
That's great. I think it's really important for people to know that, right? Like it's public information. It's out there. When we have it, we share it and it'll be up on the website. It's there now, but the new page will be updated. So that'll be great. So people can sort of do their own research and and look into it and try to understand what's there. So that's, that's good. Thank you.
Right.
Thank you very much.
It's all good information. Size of the train, the speed of the train. These incidents are the fact that only are we looking at that area, looking forward, looking to adjacent roads.
Yeah.
That's, it's all good information and hopefully the folks that are that are listening into the meeting are. But afterwards, you know, put their minds at ease, know that there's people that are dedicated to the problem.
Yeah, yeah, a lot more items.
Yeah.
So we'll continue to.
Appreciate that. And for anybody, you know, that's watching. Whenever you have questions, concerns or anything like that, please do reach out. To either the board, the town manager, the public safety officials in town. Everybody is more than happy to share all of the information. You know, most of what's out there is public information. May not always be easy to find on the website, but if you call us, that's something that we can help point you to and. And locate and find whatever's available. It's whatever we see is is the same thing that's available to anyone in the public. Great. Thank you. I definitely have the town manager report.
Have a good evening. All right. I think you get the most credit out of everyone here.
Great. Yeah, that's it.
Okay, um, I'm gonna quickly just sort of go through this because. We do have a joint meeting with the finance committee and the auditors who are on call. Wanted to let. Everyone know that on the town's website, it did go under town manager news and announcements out as a. E subscriber email updated for March. Town managers update just a couple of key things and you can view the the page to get into more detail as well as a. Two page summary from various departments as well. Some of the key things, treasurer's collectors office, water sewer bills due March fourteenth, exercise due. March twenty seventh. D B W is at least helping all the residents by treating our roads. We had two storms and we're. You know, potentially looking at a couple more. Right now, we're out of a budgeted two hundred and sixty K. We're about one eighty five. Salt shit is about is just under half full, so hopefully we can squeak out. But, you know, you know, New England. Also, for town Clark, just want to highlight this. There are twenty open positions on the ballot for some of the major boards. Selectment planning board, finance, recreation papers haven't been pulled yet. Deadline for pulling is March seventeenth and must be returned by the twenty first. Recreation is hiring for kids at play. That ends on March twenty first. And they're still looking for lifeguards and a beach director. So if anyone knows of those people and for those positions. Please contact Recreation Department. For town projects, we are continuing work on redesign the town website. Departments were informed that they should review their pages for content. Errors or to remove content, pages will be migrated April fourteenth. And we're gonna then continue to do work. The go live date is established right now is June twenty ninth. That of course. Can slide depending on how things go. For town hall bathrooms, this is something that we've been experiencing for a number of years, but that's. Mission is is in process now. We are gonna, we are looking for approval for funding to replace toilets. They will have a tank to allow for. Water to be flushed at a quicker rate to move things through the system. We've already had the plumbers clean out and polish the lines as part of this process. A second part, part of the repair will involve removal of paper towel dispensers, installation of hand dryers. But with the replacement of the toilets and the sewer line work, we would, we will be able to. Open town hall back up for use for programs for for board meetings. Last thing that, or second to last thing. Want to at least give a brief update on electrical aggregation. As everyone here may know, board engaged Colonial Power back in twenty twenty one to. Prepare the town's community aggregation plan. That plan was provided to Department of Public Utilities on March twenty second, March twenty twenty two. The Department of Public Utilities held a public hearing on in November. But. Our consultant basically told us at that time, approval of that plan. Could be six to nine months. So that pushes us towards the summer of twenty twenty three. So it is hopeful because once we get it approved, then we will have to go and solicit bids for a supplier. We would hope to have someone on by the end of summer into early fall before we get into that fall season. The consultant did say as sort of a little bit of a good news that National Grid went out and. To solicit bids for suppliers for the spring rates, that it should come down significantly. But those rates won't be effective until May first. They don't have what they would be. At this time. So that's sort of a highlight on. What's going on in March and everyone should visit town manager's page to sort of see the folders.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Please.
Yes, the chief looking for approval of the contract taken. We didn't make a motion to approve quite the incident.
Yes, Maureen, you are correct. I did see that earlier in the evening. I forgot. I was waiting for you.
Is it your turn?
I thought it was your turn. I. I made the motion to adjourn the last time.
Oh, my turn.
You're up.
I move that the board selectmen vote to approve and sign the town of up in. Of emergency management plan.
I would second the motion.
All those in favor? Motion carries by unanimous action. Thank you very much. Thank you, Maureen. Thank you, chief. Most important part of this whole conversation. Just kidding, just kidding hardly. This would be the least important part. Okay.
Paid for all appointments.
I didn't see that.
Okay.
I saw one page.
Do you want this now, chief, or? Yeah, we'll make sure we do that. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Any other questions for town manager?
No, I previously had rest of town managers report. There is a few other contrasting items in there, but keep it brief. I'm fine.
Okay, very good. One of the things I just want to emphasize is. For all of the open positions in local town government, if you're interested in running. March seventeenth was the last date to get the nomination papers. March twenty first is the last is the date that those papers need to be turned in. So just be very mindful of that if it's something that you're interested in and volunteering for town. It's a great thing to do and that's the process. So just wanted to reinforce what town manager had said. Next up, we have public inputs and any public comment that folks have. On the phone, we'll open the floor for any comments or questions. All right, hearing none, I will.
I'll make a, oh, I'll just make a quick comment, just for folks waiting at home. That may be thinking about running for whatever board you may be thinking about. I will not be pulling papers to rerun for the board of selectmen. So if anyone's interested, see the bill.
Hey. Next up on the agenda is the presentation of the audit report from Roselli, Clark and Associates.
Good evening, folks. Can everybody hear me?
We can hear you. Great. Thank you.
Good evening, honorable members of the select board. My name is Terenzio Vopacelli. I'm a certified public accountant with the firm of Roselli, Clark and Associates. From Weber, Massachusetts and right up the road in Hope Dale. You've probably received a number of items from me. One of them is what we refer to as our required communications letter dated February twenty first of twenty twenty three. In it, there's a a number of items, but I'm just gonna hit you with some highlights. Management, which includes the members of the select board are responsible for the selection. And employing the appropriate accounting policies to the town's financial statements. Accounting estimates and their related disclosures are integral parts to the financial statements. The most sensitive accounting estimates pertain to your pension and O P E V liabilities as well as your allowances for doubtful accounts. I'm pleased to say that we did not encounter any significant difficulties in completing the fiscal year twenty twenty two audit. And didn't have any disagreements with management on accounting, reporting or other auditing matters. It's important to note that we were not, I'm sorry, that we were engaged to perform an examination of the town's financial statements. And to opine on the fairness of the town's financial statements taken as a whole. Our audit was not intended to identify and detect theft or fraud. That was the focus of a forensic audit. The town's twenty twenty two financial statements, which are. The fifty six page document that you also have. Were issued on February ninth of twenty twenty three with an unmodified or clean audit opinion. There were no internal control matters or deficiencies observed during the audit that would have required formal communication to this board.
We lost you there. Can you unmute him? Hold on one sec. Terrence, you muted yourself.
You made, you're on mute.
There he is. You're back.
Very much. That last statement was actually kind of important, so I'll read it one more time. There were no internal control matters or deficiencies. In internal control observed during the audit that would require formal communication to this board. The audited financial statements, which are that fifty six page document that you all have, contain several key sections. Including the government wide financial statements. That is the statement of net position and the statement of activities that are found on pages twelve and thirteen. I'm sorry, twelve through fourteen. Those depict the government's operations as if they were a business concern, similar to say Dell up the road from you. Bank of America or whatnot. They're the full accrual financial statements. That's where we see the town's O P E V liabilities, pension liabilities, long term debt. Capital assets on your books. The fund financial statements. In what was referred to as modified accrual basis of accounting. And those are the closest to your own internal records that you all are managing your business. Those are found on pages fifteen through eighteen. You have proprietary financial statements that cover your water and sewer, again, like the government wide financials, those on a full accrual basis. There's a fiduciary financial statements for your O P E V trust. And your private purpose trusts for which the town actually has some pretty significant. Private purpose trusts in the form of rescind and scholarship and other benevolent funds. We have the notes of the financial statements. And then preceding all of that is the management's discussion and analysis. When we look at the town's governmental funds, financial statements, again, which most closely resemble your internal accounting records. The town ended fiscal twenty two with a positive fund balance of over twenty five point seven million dollars. Which is over ten point seven million dollars greater than the prior year. Each major fund reported increases in their fund balances in twenty-two. The most notable being an eight million dollar increase in your community center construction fund. And a nearly two point one million dollar increase to the general fund. The twenty-two results included the December twenty twenty-one issuance of over eleven million dollars in general obligation bonds. Together with premiums, now portion of that was recorded in your general governmental operations and others in your town enterprise funds. This was the primary contributor to the increase in the community center construction fund uh fund balance. The timing of this issuance was quite fortuitous. Um given the town's good credit rating being an AA plus, uh which is the second highest rating that S and P issues. You folks issued that debt at a true interest cost of one point eight nine percent. Had that happened six months later, it's likely that that true increase, interest cost would have exceeded three percent. Which I just did a presentation one week ago today, was very similar to another neighboring community of yours that did a very sizable offering. In um in June of twenty twenty-two. Um if anybody watched any of the uh proceedings today with Chairman Powell of the Federal Reserve. The current federal fund rates is anywhere between four point five and four point seven five percent. A two-year T-bill is currently yielding north of five percent. Uh so again, the timing of your issuance couldn't have been better. The town's general fund reported an increase in its fund balance of nearly two point one million dollars. As uh town reported positive budget to actual variances in both revenues as well as expenditures. You'll notice in the financial statements is a new column in twenty twenty-two for the ARPA fund. Um it qualified as a major governmental fund uh for financial reporting purposes. Through June thirtieth of twenty-two, the town received roughly one, actually exactly one half of its two point four million dollar allocation. And had only expended about two thousand dollars at the time. These funds, it's pretty important, must be obligated via contract or purchase order by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four. And fully expended by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six under current federal guidelines. The word obligation is important here because um. That can't be planned by management or this board or a committee or town meeting. It has to be in the form of a contract or purchase order, or the money had been already expended on the current federal guidelines. Credit rating agencies will often assess a community's budgetary flexibility by calculating a reserve ratio. Within the general fund, the reserve ratio represents the combination of the assigned and unassigned fund balances. As a percentage of general fund expenditures and normal transfers. The town's reserve ratio was approximately twenty-seven percent in June third of twenty-two, which S and P generally considers to be quite strong. In fact, your current credit rating is AA plus by S and P, which is its second highest designation. In terms of budget to actual performance on a statutory basis, the town's fiscal twenty-two revenues exceeded budget by over one point two million. And expenditures were about one point two million dollars under budget. The town comes into fiscal twenty-three, which is now almost two-thirds of the way, I'm sorry, three-quarters of the way done. With a number of significant reserves, free cash was approximately three point one million dollars. And you had general stabilization funds of two point five million. The expenditure of those funds requires approval by town meeting. The town's general debt burden at June thirtieth approached thirteen point nine million. Over three-quarters of that debt was executed in that December twenty twenty-one issuance. The water and sewer debt is funded through user fees and by the ratepayers. In addition to the long-term debt, the town, like all of its Massachusetts peers, faces significant. Uh future obligations for long-term personnel costs associated with pensions and its OPEB. The town's a member of the Western Regional Retirement System and therefore doesn't really have any control over its. Uh pension obligations, save the adoption of a pension stabilization or reserve fund. Based on its most recent actuarial valuation, the Western Regional Retirement System was approximately fifty-six percent funded. At December thirty-first of twenty twenty-one. We can expect that that ratio is gonna drop significantly in December thirty-first of twenty twenty-two, given the negative investment performance in calendar twenty-two. Um the Western Regional Retirement System currently uses a seven point two five percent discount rate in their actuarial evaluations. And they may possibly seek a reduction to seven percent, that could have an effect on your annual assessments. Currently, the uh Western Regional Retirement System forecasts an approximately ten percent increase in annual appropriations through twenty thirty. And then it would ratchet down to about four percent thereafter, um till it becomes fully funded in twenty thirty-six. Um the town's OPEB fund was approximately fourteen percent funded at June thirtieth of twenty twenty-two. Which is slightly higher than the Massachusetts trend for communities of your size. The OPEB liability was roughly five point seven million dollars. Um finally, I just want to take a moment to discuss some of the the risks that the town faces with respects to. Um phishing scams and networks uh security. Um a couple of months ago in January, Nantucket was the victim of a ransomware attack. Fortunately, they had a very good remediation plan that minimized the impact of its operations. They were down for roughly eight hours. Um they didn't have to pay the ransom, they um they also maintained a cyber insurance policy. To cover the costs to address a cyber attack. Um the town has a number of of uh programs in place to to protect itself, but. This is an area that is frankly is one of the few areas that does keep me up at night when it comes to my clients. Um because uh these, these, these uh criminals are very opportunistic. And oftentimes, it's just a click of the wrong button and uh and you get in trouble. Uh that concludes the formal part of my presentation. If anybody asks any questions or concerns, be happy to address them, or if I don't know the answers off the top of my head. Um funneling them through uh your finance director and back to this board.
Yep, great, great, sir. Thanks, thank you for the work and also let folks know that there is a link to the full fifty-eight page report. Included in the agenda for this evening's board of selectmen meeting, so that is available online. Um Steve, Maureen, any questions?
Uh no, I'm all set as well.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate the time.
Thank you so much folks.
Take care.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, just a point of order uh for uh this last agenda item we. Um we do, we are posted for a joint meeting.
Yes. Yep, so um we are gonna do the part that we've all been waiting for. So I'll defer to the chairman of the finance committee to open his meeting.
Wait, can we sit?
You are welcome to sit anywhere you like, I'll give you my seat if you'd like. Thank you.
Dick, right.
He's coming, he's coming.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, so. The uh. Finance committee was posted. Gray is present on the screen. Some wires turning to attend, so we have four of these five members. So at that point, uh we will all be prepared at eight o'clock. And the purpose of the meeting is to uh review these articles. This uh the warrant and we discuss a reserve fund transfer.
Awesome. It looks like we've got eleven capital articles was the the final number here, so I think we're gonna go through them. One at a time, based on on the memo that the town manager was kind enough to summarize for us. Uh so the first one up here is police and fire parking lot rehabilitation. So do we have someone that wants to speak to that? Or how do you want to handle it?
Uh also for uh the finance committee and board of selectmen. Uh Dennis Westgate, DPW director is on the call, um so he can also provide his. Uh professional opinion as it relates to the structural integrity of the uh parking lot. Um yeah, and perhaps he may contest to sort of talk about that at first and then. Uh Chief Browning and Chief March hand the final out.
Makes, as long as the chiefs are comfortable with that, I think I couldn't agree more, we've got an expert here, let's use him.
Obviously, Dennis is a little worried about this process. Recognize that both parking lots are failing, the fire departments is worst condition than the police department, police department does have. Two-inch gaps throughout the parking lot. They've been sealed, sealed a number of times, years. Um the most cost efficient to do them both at the same time under the current bid, same favorable pricing. But I defer to Dennis for this expertise, talk about the parking lots.
Would be my pleasure. I love to talk about asphalt, good evening. Um so as the chief stated, the the worst of the two is definitely the fire department parking lot. And it shows signs of um alligator crack, transverse cracking, and it has unraveling in several sections. The last couple of years when we did the catch basin cleaning in that parking lot. It was noted that we were cleaning a lot of asphalt debris out of the catch basins. So we knew that it was just a matter of time before that parking lot really was gonna need serious attention. And the hope is to grab it now. Before it gets so bad that we have to do a full depth reclamation on it. And we had our contractor go over and take a look at it and provide us a written estimate uh based on. The current bid that the DPW has, which is good for three years, we're in year one of it. And um the hope was to save some money by doing it now, because we got a very favorable bid. And get it before it required full depth. Now, the the police department parking lot is not quite as bad as the fire department parking lot, but it certainly is in rough shape. It has a lot of longitudinal cracking and it's showing um that it is shifting in some locations in separation. Where the crack ceiling is no longer um providing enough protection from. From water and ice to get in there and and keep separating the cracks. And it it is economical and financially savvy to go and do that parking lot at the same time as the fire department. Because you're saving on mobilization costs and you're capitalizing on on already existing um bid. So I'm I'm definitely in favor of doing those parking lots.
Excellent. Questions?
Uh. Comment, I suppose, um I had a chance today to take a, take a few minutes and kind of look the area over. I didn't think the police department parking lot really looked all that bad. Um maybe there's some savings doing them together, maybe there isn't. Fire department parking lot, the front of the building looked fine to me, the right side of it, absolutely, that's terrible. Uh the back of the building really looked all bad. Um so I, you know, we just keep getting more news about problems with the budget, more money to be spending on the budget and I've got. Residents breathing down my back complaining about their tax bill, so. I can't in good faith look for both these articles forward and do all that. You know, especially when we have roadways in towns that. You know, obviously are in need. Um. Now, I guess the question is, you know, what makes the most sense? Kick it till November? Do one of them now, one of them at a later date, or. You know, push them both off till uh again, till November, the next paving season. Um again, we have roadways in town that are in pretty rough shape, so it's gonna be difficult, I think, to sell residents on paving two parking lots. Obviously, low-speedy parking lots versus what we have going on in the other seventy-two mile roadway.
Good. Well, the roadway is coming to chapter ninety, this is something altogether different.
I agree, I'm just thinking residents are not gonna see it that way.
I know, but if to do one now, one later, it's what Dennis has said, you know, keep everything right there, all your. Equipment and do it all at one time is a savings, that's a big save. So I would support it.
Dennis, Dennis, if we didn't do it now, how how long if we're gonna do a full depth, full depth reclamation?
Well, as Steve pointed out, it is the far side of the the parking lot that's in the worst shape. Because probably because it gets the most um used from the equipment coming in and out. I wouldn't say you have a lot longer um before you're gonna have. I can tell you the contractor was already giving me the look when I told him that I wanted to do a milling overlay. And I thought it qualified and he said, yes, it qualifies, but barely. Because once we get to the point where the machine goes into to mill. And in the the, because the asphalt, by two minutes is unraveling, it comes up in chunks instead of staying. Hard on the bottom and be able to mill that top layer off, you end up pulling right to the gravel underneath. And once that starts happening, you pretty much lost any shot you have at doing a milling and overlay and you need to pull up the whole parking lot.
And if I can add on to what Dennis um just said and conversations we've had. Is that um, you know, if we wanted to kick this can down the road for two years. Um we're gonna not only be looking at material labor costs that will increase, but. For the um total price tag for what we're looking at right now. We may only just do fire for that same amount, or we may be looking at costs above and we look at out at. What some of our other capital needs are two, three years down the road. Becomes a question as far as, just like a rose, you don't want to wait until. They deteriorate and forces you to do a full depth reclamation and reconstruction. You want to be able to use some of that structure to make sure you're extending those dollars, so. That's where um from staff's perspective, um recognize that they're competing at uh. Interest out there as far as tax dollars. Uh we also are of the opinion that this is a wise use because looking at timing, look at total costs. Um you know, that uh the price tag now will be less um. To do that work and will just provide us for another fifteen, twenty years down the road.
What about the um? Sort of, is this part of the capital budget plan, do you know, Dan?
Or do you just?
And is it part of like the sort of? Capital improvement program, right? Cause I mean, I would think there's a lot of, we have a lot of municipal.
Not in the plan, it's not.
It's not at the plans, it's not, okay, that was my question, so. Cause I think that that's, that's one of those things where the more disciplined we are in that plan, it sort of addresses some of both, I mean, some, address some of everybody's concerns, right? Like Dennis, the description you gave of why we need to do it sooner than later, to me was like. I'm a visual person, so that's a very clear visual, like you can't mill an overlay once chunks are coming up. And at that point, you've got to do a full depth reclamation. And knowing that really changes my opinion about it, because when I drove through there. Like Steve, as a layperson looking at it, I'm like, it's fine, you can drive over this, it's like, yeah, it's practical, but so is my driver. It doesn't carry any weight, it's not a lot of traffic, but the issue is when you do have to maintain it, which at some point you do. There's a big difference between just grinding it up and paving it and digging the building up and laying new sand and gravel and steaming that and doing the whole thing, so. Um I very much appreciate that explanation and having. These kinds of things in the plan help us make and rationalize the the investments that we need to make, so. I'm certainly in support of uh this article, given that information. Yeah, I was gonna say, are.
Are you in favor of both parking lots or one parking?
Uh I'm in favor of the article that's written, so whatever, hundred and eighty thousand dollars is recommendate, the recommendation coming from Dennis, I would assume that. The police station parking lot is not. I mean, it's not like we're gonna get another ten years out of that, right, before we have to. Do the same, come back and do the same thing anyway, it's probably only a few years behind if that.
The police department parking lot is deceiving because it doesn't have alligator cracking, which is very visual and stands out. And everybody sees it on the road, they understand what alligator cracking is because. It looks like the back of an alligator's back. What the police department has is longitudinal and transverse cracking, which is very large separations. And allows water to get in there during the winter time and freeze. And then inevitably, it leads to alligator cracking. So the police department is closer to um. The condition of the fire department than it looks, it's deceiving, you're not gonna get that much longer out of that parking lot.
Okay.
We've seen a big change over the last couple of years, we do seal coat and crack, seal every two to three years. Couple of years, those cracks are getting.
Yeah, going, yeah, interesting. Same can happen to mine, and I think in the New England conditions too, like it's just, you can go from. Okay to bad to really bad really fast, if you have a one bad year, these things can just get. these things can just get, I know it from my own little driveway. So go ahead.
I'm confused.
Okay, shoot.
What is the point of this discussion? Is this discussion to be whether you will put this on the warrant or the?
Yes, answer that. Yes.
Presentation.
Yes, to see if we're going to put it on the warrant.
That's what the, that's what the.
That's what the discussion is. Anything else?
That's what the, that's what the, oh, this is going to get fun. That's so you, you know, I think what you're trying to say is would the board ever not put an article on the warrant? And the answer to that question is yes, that's part of the responsibility of the board to look at the, look at the articles. Review them with the town's best interest and perspective based on how the people that elected us. And to make decisions and decisions about what goes on the art, what goes on the warrant and what doesn't. And I think you know that. So what is the real question?
Where I can see this going is that we're having this discussion as to whether or not somebody is going to make a favorable recommendation as to, you know, whether we support this article or we don't support this article. And in fact, when in fact, if this is just the discussion of whether or not the board is going to put on the warrant, I don't see the necessity for having discussion with the finance committee. It's this to put something on the warrant is within the realm and the scope of the board. So I'm, I'm having it just.
What do you want to get out of this conversation? You're just looking to make a recommendation from the finance committee or what do you?
I'm want, I guess I'm going to ask you this one. Why did you want the finance committee to participate in this discussion?
So that we could get your recommendation and your perspective.
That's not. You don't need our recommendation. You already said that this, the purpose of this discussion is to whether or not you're going to put this on the warrant. Okay, that's a total, that's a total separate discussion than whether or not a finance committee is going to recommend supporting this article. Can I, can I acquire my good friend, Justice One Al, who has been this road before? Do you, is there any? Do you understand where?
Second, we'll, we'll ask Maureen from her perspective. Paul. I'm just taking, let's all just take a breath.
I.
Uh, we're sitting here in a room.
I understand.
There's like 10 of us. I know you're upset.
No, I'm not. But you, you know me, okay? I, my back is much worse than my bite.
I appreciate that.
I agree too.
Part, part of the intent of having the finance committee and the board together was so that our department heads didn't have to come and make the same pitch two different times. If you'd rather have them do that, then you can close down your meeting and you can excuse yourselves and the board will have the conversation we want to have. We're actually together would benefit everybody, including the department heads as well as finance committee, as well as us. So that we can get your input here directly rather than having to do it in two different forms.
I totally support that premise because Mr. Manager and I have had this discussion more than once.
Okay.
About having the proponent of the article just make the presentation.
Yeah.
Beforehand.
Okay.
I'm, I don't believe anybody in this finance committee in a takes her in a position to make a recommendation, yea or nay on this article.
Okay.
We will ask that question to like to the proponents of the article. But I, I, I don't expect the finance, you will get a recommendation, yes or no from us.
Okay, that's totally, okay. So your expectation was that this, the reason you're here now is to hear the presentations.
Yes.
From the departments.
Yes.
And is part of your frustration the fact that we're debating about voting whether or not to put it on the warrant and that's extending the amount of time that you're going to have to see.
I haven't heard any discussion leading to whether or not you would put it on the warrant. I'm, I'm hearing discussion from whether or not it is worthy of doing the project.
Which essentially is whether or not it goes on the on the warrant.
Not necessarily.
Okay.
Okay, my thought and philosophy that all articles should go on and let the taxpayers vote the way they want to vote. And I don't, I don't believe that the selectmen really have the authority to not put it on.
My theory is that the board of selectmen don't start acting like a board of selectmen, you might as well dissolve the board. Because if you're applying everybody, put articles forward, don't have a board of selectmen.
I, I, with all due respect, yeah, with all due respect, we all have different opinions about it. I totally get it. I understand the perspective. Obviously, from a legal perspective, it's the board's role according to the law to determine what goes on the warrant, Maureen. You know that, right? I know, I know the spirit of the, you're, you're talking about the spirit of it, which is.
The taxpayers' money.
It's the taxpayers' money. It's their decision. Totally get it. But according to the law.
The decision.
According to the law, it's our job to determine what articles go on the warrant, right? You can't disagree with what the law is. Okay, well, we'll have a lesson after this.
But just, just so that folks at home can kind of follow along, there's a little more to the whole situation lurking. We know that we have two school districts that are breathing down our back for substantial increases in funding. Is there something that I don't think that shouldn't be a surprise to certainly anybody on FinCom or the VOS? So we've got 37 warrant articles here. I mean, do you want to put 40, 37 warrant articles forward? Knowing that you're probably going to in one way, shape or form.
May I speak?
Can I ask a quick question first?
No. All the money that we're talking about here.
These 11 articles.
These 11 items.
Yeah.
Has no, makes no barrier on the fact that how much money we have to spend for the budget. These are free cash items. It is not coming from raisin appropriate. And when you deal with the raisin appropriate, that is where you become dealing with how much money is available. This does not affect the living. But this is money that is free cash. It is there. And we've always taken the premise that free cash was used for capital. Go back and look at the financial reserve policy that we came up with seven or eight, nine years ago. But that was the plan is how we were going to handle this. So to, to say that we're not going to be able to fund the school because we're going, we're going to pay for parking lot is, is, is totally irresponsible.
Guys, timeout. Hold on. Stop.
What do we do four years ago?
Hold on. Hold on, guys. We're totally sideways on this thing. All right. We've got 11 capital articles. We clearly miscommunicated. There were different expectations about what we're going to do in this meeting. We've never done this before. Let's give ourselves a little grace. Clearly, there were different expectations coming into this meeting. Okay? So what I would recommend if you're okay with this is that we listen to the presentations from the department heads on the 11 capital items. We're not going to get any input from you as the finance committee, because you're saying you don't want to give it to us. You can ask me questions.
Hear what the opponent said.
And you can ask.
But the original intent, when I Joe and I have had this conversation three or four times with the, with the idea of making this process a little easier so that Chief Bradley or Chief Marshand or Dennis wouldn't have to come and make the same presentation twice, basically the interest of expedience. So let's just let them make their presentations and then we'll go on and talk about the financial reserve, uh, the reserve, the fund transfer. And we can adjourn our meeting. We can go on our way.
Okay, but you understand the way the board engages in these conversations that we have to debate. So that, that was a miscommunication between the finance committee and the board. Right?
Yes, so I don't know. I'm, you're not putting words in my mouth, sir.
I'm just trying to clarify what we're trying to do here. So you don't.
Let's go on.
You don't want us to have a discussion about what we're doing. You just want to hear the presentations. I just want to be clear. You're, you want to listen to the presentations and ask questions. You good? Everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Good?
I was just curious if the other members of finance committee are okay with sitting in or are you also in favor of suspending their meeting and moving along? Or do you think this is just the usual meeting?
Yeah. Good to listen, good to listen to the presentation. Can I actually ask a question about the article itself?
A hundred percent. Yes, that's what we're here for.
So $180,000. Steve mentioned roads are in disarray. How much does 180,000 go towards roads, Dennis, that are in need of doing versus you know, the parking lots? I understand the parking lots are in need as well. We obviously have a lot of road issues. So if we were to say we had road issues instead of a parking lot, how far is 180,000 to go?
No, you put me on the spot.
I, I don't even answer that. I'm just looking for, you know, is it fixed?
Right, a mile or 10 miles.
Yeah, I can, I can, it would take me a few minutes and to do some gazuntas. So come up with about what we could get on out of a road with just a simple mill and overlay. Uh, can I get back to you on that?
When Steve said it, it just kind of hit me that a lot of people complain about roads and here we are doing parking lots. We have no articles for roads. So we have the chapter 90, I agree, but just it just popped in my head. So.
You know, our chapter 90 money, as you know, will be 315,000, give or take a few bucks.
Do we have time to have another expedition? We need more warrant articles in two weeks. So that's going to give us.
Yeah, I mean, we still have them committee meeting. So.
Okay, so we don't.
We don't have to take that home tonight.
Okay, so I saw the motions to approve all these, like we were going to do that. So we'll just skip that, run through them, answer, ask and answer questions and be done. Okay, great. Any other questions on our, any other questions on Article 22? From the finance committee or from the board? Okay, Article 23 is $50,000 for the ramp at the police station. Sir.
So the concrete ramp going up to the main entrance of the police station has been deteriorated a number of times. Uh, it is deteriorating underneath. There is rebar showing. Feel at this point that it's something that should be replaced. See the railings are rusting again at the bottom. So it's a good opportunity to replace it now before it does fail, then we have no handicap access into the police station. Again, I'll lean on Dennis, one of his contractors would be giving us a quote on that. Obviously, this project, they would have to bid anyway, but to give us some ideas for that 50,000 is realistic. Dennis, any comments?
As the chief said, thank you, chief. As the chief said, the, the ramp is in rough shape. Um, the railings were replaced at one time, chief. I don't recall when they were replaced, but sometime back. And you can see that they did spot fixes when they put the railings in. So they obviously either saw cut or hammered out those sections. And they, they put another aggregate in there that mixed in with the ramp. Underneath, you can see exposure from the re, the rebar. And the stairs are in pretty tough shape along with the two pillars. I don't recall, chief, are those granite stairs?
They are granite stairs. They are, they are cracked and they just need to be repaired.
So any, any of the granite stairs that could be R and R, in other words, they could be removed and reset would be a cost savings. It's hard to come up with a ballpark without having it looked at by an engineer to take a look at all the structural deficiencies. And I'm, I'm hoping, as the chief said, to get an engineer out there soon so that we could button down exactly what that price will be.
Steve, does anybody use stairs?
Occasionally, yeah, not very often.
And nobody could.
95.
Schools period, everybody cracks except the ramp, right?
Yes, unless they are going to the classroom.
Yeah.
Dennis, is there any, any any material we can use to prevent this from happening again? Am I changing the, the mix? The aggregate mix or?
It's, it's definitely an older ramp. You can tell by the way that it was laid out. Um, you don't see ramps built today like that. They look much more like they're prefabbed in comparison to what this ramp looks like. Chief, what do you know the original year that ramp was built?
1990, 1991.
It's going to be 35 years old.
Yeah, and it shows. It definitely shows.
We've had several repairs. We've talked about the railings. All the last repairs we had is they took the railings out, rewelded them and then reset them in the concrete, but they are rusting again.
Questions, comments from the board?
Uh, I do have a quick question, but I don't expect Dennis that you'll have an answer. Um, it's actually two questions. We have the stairs out front. I took a look at them uh, this afternoon. Their, their chain is kind of hanging there to block the use of the stairs coming up warrant. But this particular article is strictly the ramp only, correct?
The ramp and repairing the front stairs that are up at the station, not down by the.
They go down to just the local, the lower landing there.
The only reason the chain, the chain is there during the winter months, so people on we don't have snow removal in that section.
Okay. So that was question one. And then question two, Dennis, is when the building was built was built to, I'm assuming handicap accessibility via 1990? So by getting into this project in anywhere, are we going to be triggering a massive reconstruction of the front of the building? Has the code changed as far as angle of the ramp width? Railings, height, anything like that, that's going to upset the algorithm?
If by some reason the ramp is off of the 3% mark. Um, I'm sorry, 5% and 3% cross pitch. All it would need is another panel continuation to the front of the building. So when it went down to the edge of the building to the parking lot, it would take one jog to the right to make it down to the parking lot. That's the most it would need. But I, I'll bet that it still meets ADA the way it is for grades.
Maureen?
No.
Nope.
Dick?
Any other questions?
The capital budget unanimously was favored.
Great. Was this, is this in the capital budget plan?
No. And actually, I took some looks at the paving and the parking lots as well.
So those were in the plan. Right up, put it last year or year before.
The year four.
Oh, okay.
Oh, the capital plan and the original capital plan, three different plans. So it's in the plan, but we don't know which one.
It's, yeah, it's in the most recent plan that Derek had pulled together, the 10 year spreadsheet. Both this as well as the paving of the two parking lots were in the previous two plans.
They were in both plans?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you, so fiscal year FY '21 and '22. There's a large spreadsheet that when Blithe was here, there was a, it was a word document, but then had a like 13 through 18 capital plan. Then when Derek was here, he transferred that into a large spreadsheet. That's been into the last three fiscal years, both these projects.
And they're up for this year? Like, are they at sort of, they're at the top of the list for stuff?
They're, they're in the FY '24 sort of column.
Okay, because if there's a plan that we can see over like the next 10 years, right? I think it makes a lot of these conversations a lot easier because we're talking about the same thing. So we'll separately have a board meeting agenda to look at the capital plan.
Yeah.
So that that helps expedite some of these conversations. No, okay, super. Any?
Um, it is public. I don't think it is on the website. Um, uh, but I can send that around. Uh, that was something that was.
And we'll put, we'll put it on the website.
Yeah, no, I can, I have it all on.
Yeah. So.
Like I said, to your point, there's been a discussion about planning and the shift, the 10 year plan came from the conversations with capital.
This wasn't in the original one that Blithe, Blithe, Blithe plan is basically capital, rolling, rolling stocking. roofs and things like that. The original one that Blithe made.
I know that we had a goal, as you didn't finish with, with the taxpayer, the DC that we want to get with Joe to talk about. And we do, they, most of these capital plans are going to have a lot more things on the list than budget will pay for, but it's about hedging priority and most again.
Any other questions on our?
Sean, you got any, anything to ask, Dennis? All right, thank you. No, I guess.
I, I just think that I, I remember participating in several reassessments of the capital plan as times changes, conditions changes and needs change.
Yeah.
So the capital plan is a good thing to have as a guideline, but as things deteriorate, get older.
Yeah.
You know, and it is important, you know, as you all know, we have an issue right now with the heating system at the fire station. So it's
Yeah.
It, it becomes issues as these buildings get old. This building now here has, you know, a sewage problem.
Yeah.
And as, as we have those issues.
Yeah.
They get older.
They get older.
I, I think of a capital budget plan, right, it's almost like an architectural drawing is to a house construction, right? Like, looks great on paper, but when you get there, things are gonna change, something's gonna come up, you're gonna need a new railing, you're gonna dig up the pavement, you're gonna find something else, so like. Totally get that, right, like, we don't know, we don't know, we don't know, of course, but.
In, in these two articles, you gotta remember it's a public safety issue.
Yeah.
Somebody trips or falls, has, goes through the railing at the police station. And the amount of money you're asking will become cheap.
Yeah.
The same thing with parking lots, um, you know, it becomes cheap. Unfortunately, both those things are things that we put salt on.
Yeah.
Try not to put the bad salt on Genesis white and stuff on it, and we try to put the green stuff on it. But it eats the, it eats the material and uh, hopefully, if, you know, the concrete they, they, or whatever we put there changes, but it's stuff that's gonna go.
You have to keep in, have to keep in mind that the police station is like thirty-five, oh, thirty-five years old.
It's a building itself, while the main car of that building is very.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that was, that was, you went to, you went to first grade and then you had the first grade. And but, and, and the fire station is how old, Mike?
Uh, it's twenty-six. Twenty now.
Twenty years to shoot.
It's twenty years this year.
Okay.
All right. High school is.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five years old. So, you know, we're.
Looking forward to capital plans, looking forward to capital, the community's looking forward to having conversations with Joe and continuing the ten-year plan that was started, that was an effort. And like you said, keep wanting.
The school, the school is, I mean, responsibility of W R State.
Correct, so we're talking about the town.
Oh, yes, yes, oh, yeah.
There's a school on our.
Very soon, nine Milford Street, gonna be the flagship.
Oh, Mike, one of the thing, one of the articles that we put off and keep shutting it down the road is you have a, a DPW installed.
Oh, I, yeah.
You have to do something, I, you know, it's, it's, I understand, it's all the needs, but I, it's all money. They could be dealt with.
I mean, these are, these are a large, fine, I mean, we have workshops, we talk about all these things, but. You know, a lot of times, different towns do things different ways. A lot of times I squawk about capital is, I don't like replacing things until they're due, because when a heating system goes down, it's not an option. A parking lot is an option. There are a lot of towns that take free cash and plug it into operations, why? Because you generate a lot of free cash. My first budget, we had going into November, one million dollars of free cash, we had three point one million this year. Makes you wonder. When your friends are all moving out of town and you're rolling with three point one million in free cash and two point five million in capital stab or stabilization. Makes you scratch your head.
Any other questions or comments on Article twenty-three? Okay, Article twenty-four is the Grafton Up and Railroad Consultant Services, you did refer to this a little bit, but.
But the uh, originally we talked about putting a line in an emergency management budget, uh, which uh, decided against. This uh, this is gonna be a multi-year project, we've done best to do an article for cash and draw from that in a couple of years. So this would provide uh, for consulting fees, third-party reviews, uh, any consultants we need for the. As it's made a terror plan, also variety of responsibilities, make sure that, you know, everything that's uh, changing. Up to par for what you want to get.
Question for the chief?
No, I think we covered this pretty well in the earlier presentation.
I, I have one question, as you guys talked to the railroad themselves, I thought there was some discussion early on about talking to them about potentially paying a fee or helping with some of those services. So is the only purpose?
I've also, I've reached out to start that conversation, sort of in lieu of um, building firm fees, having a memorandum of agreement that they pre-populate a peer review basically to provide, uh, allow the town, like. Um, say residential subdivision, governor's land, it provides a peer review for planning board, uh, to draw down to retain professional uh, services. So I've, I've approached that, that subject with Grafton Up and, um, they're interested in talking about that further. Um, so that is something that we will pursue, um, and if all of a sudden we either don't need the article or we just never spend it and we rescind that spending at a fall town meeting, if we're successful, then thank you.
Yeah, I'm not saying not to vote again, I'm not saying vote against the article, I'm just saying.
Two things, two things that Steve, they have paid in the past.
Yes.
One already. And what there is a clear set of guidelines in the willing code for these services, for these types of situations, so it gives a clear, clear guidelines. I don't know how to help and capture some of that expense, because they don't have to find a permit and provide a fee to the community, so they have that opportunity to help us out. By doing something in Norwegian.
And another, another thing we talked about today, uh, earlier is that hopefully we can recapture some of those costs when their evaluation is done. Next time, because they're obviously undervaluated as far as uh, their property and taxes, so. We expect that will lie significantly next year. For revaluation with uh, investments that they've made.
Joe, what does Grafton do? I know they had Grafton a few years ago, they, they went through hell with that uh, LNG issue. How does, how does Grafton handle the potential exposures from uh, the railroad at that, you know?
Steve, there's all got served out in the legal settlement.
There, there's much higher behind closed doors with mediators that that was all.
That would.
Any legal settlement.
That, that all had to do with the rights of the railroad versus the rights of the town and, and.
Correct.
In regard.
Are you talking more from a safety standpoint, or are you talking how they work through the issue that they had?
Um, I guess my, my point, and I think they've covered it, is what the, what is expected of the railroad? With regard to helping out the town and, and things like that, like, like you're trying, we're talking, like we're talking about here.
I think one of the things that we may wanna think about visiting and being a consulting engineer, doing work for state and federal governments outside of Buckton. Um, a lot of times a memorandum is of agreement or understanding for things like this.
Yeah.
And, you know, that's something that maybe we wanted to think about as part of a long-term agreement.
Yeah.
As we deal with, you know, the management, risk management issue with the railroad.
Just out of curiosity, uh, I guess you'd probably know this, Mike, Mike. How, how, uh, how much has had that thing grown since they first took it over till now?
Hey, talking about Article twenty-four.
No, I'm just talking about the railroad.
Oh.
Back to the railroad.
Let's check in.
Seventy, oh, it started with a pellet.
Yeah.
And now if you go on that property, it's a large warehouse, there's silos for, for chemical storage. The bad is racks, there's trash signings, there's.
Yeah.
Several buildings have, have been uh, built on the property, um, and millions of, of infrastructure invested.
So, thousand percent, something like that.
Oh, it's grown seventy-five percent.
So, they owe us something. Right, they owe us something to be good corporate citi- to be a good corporate citizen.
Yeah, and there's something there, a few budget cycles ago or a couple of warrants ago, we actually had a warrant article, I forgot who brought it forward, but it was to have a utility company come in and do an assessment in town and kind of figure out if we were properly being reimbursed for your, whatever utilities were in town. That may be something that we may wanna look forward to, Joe, and the fact of. Get a warrant article to go together and figure out what's the correct way to properly. Bill and get the, whether it's personal property or whether it's, you know, the real property of the railroad. You know, what is, what should the town be getting compensated for that, whatever we're getting? I know it's in the high two hundreds annually, but.
Well, what should a town, a Utah loading facility do all day up there off of this road?
The second reminder, it's not that large.
Oh, it isn't?
The, the Grafton, so it is more significant.
All right, the, the, you know, there's some, in the past few years, especially in the past, I would say, three years, we've had a.
I'm sorry.
Much better. Had a much better relationship with the, with the railroad. Uh, and we have a much better working relationship with them, I mean, I've always wondered. And on the assessment side, if you need a, a. An expert that knows what those places are, uh, the value of those places, um. You know, the actual value, I don't know if our assessment process properly looks at that, maybe it does, I don't know. Uh, but, but that, um, that is something to, to look at, but uh. It, it's, it's not gonna go away, it's, this amount of money too, that we're appropriating, I, I would have to say that we've got. And we're kind of over expending free advice stuff, um, to all, and a, a pretty close to an equal amount of that money already. Uh, and it cost us the past three years of subject matter experts that have.
I mean, yeah, right now we're using uh, some emergency management general expense money to pay for some of these things. Uh, but that doesn't take us very far, so, you know, we do need some of, of money to go to when we need it. If it can be offset by the railroad, that's great, then we don't need to spend the article, we can turn that back into the town, but we need to have something there. Uh, for those situations where we need third-party, need expertise, uh, advice.
Brett, I think we're, uh, we're kinda going down, I'm gonna stick with this route here, I think we could probably get back to.
What we're meeting.
No, trial meeting too.
You know what I wanna do? Article twenty-five, highway department, one ton, one-ton truck replacement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, the highway division is looking to replace one of the two one-ton dumps that they utilize. So we're looking for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to replace a two thousand and eleven Chevy Silverado one-ton dump with a hundred and twelve thousand, two hundred and forty-seven miles. They stated there were two trucks, unfortunately, they were both purchased at the same time, but I don't like replacing trucks at the same time like this, I like to stagger them. So the numbers are not so large. Um. The replacement truck will be one of equal size and capability, so we're looking for the exact same thing that we have. And we're looking to take the truck that we're replacing and put it into the shared trucks, we have two shared trucks that the water department uses and the parks kids use during the summer. And um, and they pull trailers and they use by the cemetery. And the one that, and we're gonna get rid of the oldest one of those, which is a two thousand and six Chevy Silverado. So we are getting rid of a vehicle, we are not increasing the fleet, but not that particular vehicle, where it's not being used all of the time, like Highway uses it, we could get a couple more years if it goes into the, I like to call them the pool vehicles, there's two of them. We did that with one of the last truck we replaced for the water department as well.
So I think we retired the, was it the um, cemetery truck got retired and the old dump truck, so are you gonna maintain two one-ton dump trucks? Or actually three now?
Well, there's, no, Highway has two, and this, this will maintain two in Highway. And then the one that I'm replacing will go into the shared trucks, which the water uses, so we uses, parks use, there are two of those, Steve. And they're both pickups, ones, if, if you go over, you've seen them, one's white and one's green. Um, the green one has um, broken leaf springs in the back, went past inspection sticker this time around, the white one's on its last leg as well.
I was talking just, just the one-ton dump trucks, cause we bought a brand-new one-ton dump about two and a half years ago, three years ago, so this would be two new one-ton dumps, is that correct?
We bought, the last one we bought was for the parks department.
Okay.
Dennis, is this, huh? Will, please, all right. Dennis, is this included ten-foot fish or plow?
Yes. I'm sorry, in, includes a plow as well, yep.
Ten foot?
I believe it's a ten foot on, yeah, it's a one-ton, so they have ten foots on them.
And there's no, there's no way to transfer, transfer. The one we have to the other one, again, it's five years old.
No, because I'm gonna maintain that truck, so that plow with that truck is gonna stay with it, and the old pickup, the two thousand and six we're getting rid of has uh, either an eight foot or a nine foot on it, that's gonna go with the truck.
All right.
This truck also has a stainless steel body, and that's one good thing that we have done, is the two highway trucks that are two thousand and elevens. The reason why that they're still running well after ten years, which is their life expectancy, is because they have diesel engines and they have stainless bodies. Otherwise, the, the truck wouldn't have made it this long.
Any, Nick, Sean, Steve?
Article twenty-six, DPW director vehicle replacement.
Yes, sir, so this one is the director's vehicle, this is the black Ford Explorer that I run, and I believe it is a two thousand and fourteen. It has a hundred and forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars on it, uh, seven, seven hundred and ninety-seven miles on it. And it is um, it's in the shop more than it isn't these days, so it's time for replacement, and I'm looking to replace it with a green vehicle. And um, we had put a, Joe and I had put a placeholder in there for sixty-five grand, because we were having some difficulties getting prices and commitments from Chevy, which is on the state bid list, and Ford. So that we could take a look at their green vehicles, but we're looking at um, either a hybrid or an EcoBoost engine, both of those are green vehicles, so that the mileage is considerably better compared to this one. This vehicle will be auctioned or traded in, whichever gives the town the best value.
Things.
Dennis, what's, what's the availability on, on, on these?
Quick calm.
I know there was trouble with the, the uh, Explorer, trying to get the Explorers, but they had the interceptor package, didn't they?
Yeah, the interceptor Explorers, a lot of them were almost twelve months out, um, and there were significant problems with the hybrids. Which put them out even further and had chemical failures, so um, Ford has a lot of issues right now.
So what's the availability on this?
So the, the Fords are available, the Chevys are, they had seventeen, Liberty had seventeen come over, eighteen come over. On today, a lot, seventeen was spoken for, and the one remaining one is white, which I really didn't want, a white vehicle. Um, trying to stay with the same colors for everything, so everything looks, can, you know. Everything matches in the DPW and, and around town, so it's probably gonna be a Ford. It, it's either gonna be the EcoBoost, um, which qualifies as a green veh- vehicle, or the hybrid, and like the chief said, the hybrid has been having problems, and my research tells me that the majority of the problems are in um, police departments and municipalities, because the vehicle sits and idles a lot more than with the state police, the state police don't seem to be um, sitting and idling quite as long as the local municipalities do, they tend to be on the highway and moving a lot more, and that's what the vehicles are made for. So the hybrids seem to be standing up a lot better with the state police than they are with local police departments, I'm still researching it though. So the sixty-five, I'll get, I digress, the sixty-five is a place, the placeholder, I, I, I would suspect that's gonna be more like the low forties.
From the board, you know.
It's just one question based overall, just to the board or to everybody else, have you looked at electrifying the fleets at all? What it would take to do anything like that for?
So I've had, probably not, probably not police. I've had initial conversations with National Grid, they provide a service where if we give them an inventory of all our vehicles, they will go through and provide recommendations. So just haven't signed that engagement with them to do it, it's no commitment, it's not like we're tied to anything, um, so uh, that is something that we'll be looking at doing.
But it's EV charging, I mean, just, we don't want a whole bunch of others.
Almost like a mass save for our vehicle inventory, right, they'll come in with recommendations, yeah.
It's actually, it's probably gone, but they do offer to uh, get you all the interconnection, you just don't have to get all the equipment, but there's ton of ITC and other stuff that's out there, so doesn't make sense for police or fire, but it might make sense for, for Dennis and.
I guess the first question, we, we'd have to make sure that we actually have the charging station available, right, at whatever the area is, whether it's the police department, fire or DPW. I know certain towns have them, it's, it's, it's very popular with this inspectional services, because they're basically in-town short trips.
Yeah, and it makes sense for a vehicle that's not used around the clock, so, you know, one of our cruisers may be used on all these shifts, and it's hard to tuck that away and charge it when you.
Right, charge for five hours, it's not happening.
And you can't, we may be sitting out on the roadway for four, five, six hours at an accident scene with it idling, and that's, that's not great for the launching vehicle either.
Yeah, the range may not be capable for police work at this point in time, as far as EV vehicles, but.
Maybe just a chief's car.
Mine's a cruiser, so I respond to scenes and the less scenes are quite some time here. Steve, to Steve's point, the, the new building has a, a, a place for a charging station, the wire is already in the, in the, in the ground. And, and Mr. Manager is, is working with the grid, because we're, we're hoping. And, and Mr. Manager is, is working with the grid because we're, we're hoping that grid will provide us. With the, with the charging station. And it's one of these things where it's a public charging station, but if you have your electric vehicle. And you, you're not, you're not charging on a dime. You're, you're swiping your credit card if you want, if you want to charge. The, the, the uh, there is provisions and there is a place for a charging station in that new parking lot of the new building.
Yeah, it's in a lot of the new building codes as well. I have a couple of friends that are electricians and they say that the. Garage is now have to be wired for an EV vehicle. What do you hear? I have nothing else.
Article twenty-seven, the roadside mowing tractor purchase.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, we've had brief discussion about this earlier, but I'll go back. Um, this is something that. DPW proposed many years ago and we have. Brought it forward every single year, but for one reason or another. It wasn't the right year to put it on town floor. And this is actually um. A piece of equipment that will pay for itself inside of six years because the DPW is proposing that after the piece of equipment is purchased. That we reduce the operating budget. As it stands right now, would be a reduction of twenty-five thousand. A year for six years and that machine pays for itself. Understanding that six years from now. The DPW will have spent a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to hire an outside contractor, or at least that amount. To hire an outside contractor to come in and do our roadside mowing. This also increases our efficiency and effectiveness by allowing us to schedule our own roadside mowing. Instead of me having to put personnel with an outside vendor. We can cut the, the sides of the, the roads twice a year instead of once a year. And we can do every road in town instead of just select roads. We also have the ability to go off-road and go around our dams and in the water and wastewater locations. So all around, this is a very, in my opinion, this is a very um wise purchase.
Any questions from the board?
Just, just my same comment as the last time, really just not, not a fan. Going to be kind of level funded with this budget. I don't want to take on that capital expense. The training expense, the maintenance expense. So just not a fan of it at this time, but we can talk about it more. Any questions? I ask you.
I know we talked about this a couple weeks ago.
Then, then Dennis and I have had several conversations about this, so I, I have. No questions.
Article twenty-nine wastewater sand filtration refurbishment.
So the Department of Public Works is requesting two hundred and fifty thousand funding. From the wastewater divisions retained earnings. And we're proposing to repair and replace the wastewater treatment facilities. Um, sand filters. So the funding is necessary to repair the sand filtration system at the water wastewater treatment facility originally installed. In the late nineties. Upton's wastewater treatment process includes tertiary water treatment. Tertiary water treatment is the final stage of a multi-stage wastewater cleaning process. The third stage. Of the treatment removes inorganic compounds, bacteria, viruses, parasites and such. Our sand systems are, we're, are plaguing us now because they're so old, they're becoming ineffective. And basically, if we can't maintain that tertiary level of treatment, then we stand to have an illicit discharge. Into the river. Um, so. That is why we are proposing the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to replace um and do some repairs. Replace all of the media, which is sand. And that is one of the buildings adjacent. Um, if you look directly across from the middle of the wastewater treatment plant, there was a long metal building. That is the sand filters. They're very large.
I skipped article twenty-eight, so we'll go back to that one. Uh, questions from the board?
Um, I have not.
Mr. Flaherty?
No, do we, do we have quotes for the work at two fifty? Like from Time Bond or anybody like that?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
Do you have quotes on the work? For two fifty?
Yes. So I'm sorry, that's a good point. So the, the request for water and wastewater capital is in Ty and Bond's report of their assessment that they did. It is part of their capital. And we are using their quotes that have been updated, obviously. Thank you for pointing that out.
Do you, you figure that those quotes are valid? There's no escalator involved in them?
No, we, we took their old figures and we had them redo them.
Alright, thank you.
And press on, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'd be curious how they do that, but I will send an email afterwards. I don't want to burn time. Getting into the technicalities of that project. I'm just wondering if they pull all the material out. How do they actually do that, but. We'll let that go.
Article twenty-eight park cemetery forestry mower replacement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we're looking to replace, we have. Um, three standards. They're called standards. I'm sure you've seen them around town. Where the employee is standing upright on the mower. Um, these are primarily used in the cemeteries because of their tight turning radiuses. And their small size that they can get in between the stones. And they move rather quickly and they do a superior cut. Like I said, we have three of them. One we purchased last year. And replaced one. And uh, we have two older ones and this is replacing the oldest one. With the exact same unit. That we have. The one that we're looking to replace for the board's. Information. Um, my mechanic said that uh, this is the last year we're going to get out of the engine for sure. We've been babying it and putting it aside and not using it as much as the other ones because it's burning oil. Really bad to the point where we're afraid that the engine's going to go on us. And that's, that's the main cost associated. With the unit. So we could turn around and price out replacing the engine and then most likely a fresh engine. With an old hydraulic pump, an old hydraulic drive system will end up wearing that out next. And before you know it. We replaced the whole unit for twice the cost of buying a new one, which is why we're looking to just replace the unit.
Dennis, quick question. When we accepted Maplewood Cemetery, I seem to recall, did we buy one or two stand-up mowers for that project?
One.
I ask you.
Steve, Sean?
I'll keep it in the roadside.
Article thirty, water tank refurbishment and repairs.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The DPW is looking for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars from retained earnings. Um, to utilize towards refurbishing the vaults at the Pratt Hill. And the Pearl Street tanks. Um, along with ladder repairs at both locations. So both of these tanks have underground vaults. This is where the infrastructure from the tank goes out to the road. Before it gets to the road and ties in with our uh transmission lines. In the vaults, there are meters, there are valves. It allows us to bypass lines. To document how much water is being used, the pressure that's going through. And the vaults are really old and they're leaking. There's water that's getting in them during heavy rainstorms. We find that we've got to pump out the vaults to get in there. And we have some of the apparatus that's been compromised by some of the excess moisture. So we're looking to revamp those vaults, which by the way are in the Ty and Bond um assessments. And there are ladders that go up on the side of these two tanks for inspections and to get up. Uh, to reach the top if there's an issue with any of the apparatus up there. And both of the ladders were identified. As needing to be replaced in um Ty and Bond's assessment a couple of years ago. And this year we, we have pushed them off in the past because we thought we could get additional time out of them. But they're getting pretty rusty and rotted and it's time to get rid of them and put new ladders out. Both of the water and wastewater articles are proposed to be retained earnings, so they have no impact on the tax base and they have no impact on the rate there.
Thank you. Steve Maureen?
Do we have balances for water and wastewater?
I wrote them down. I don't know, with me though.
Water is.
Like seven hundred and fifty pounds?
Yeah, water is like seven, I'm sorry, wastewater is like seven fifty-five. Or seven thirty-five and wastewater, our water is eight and change. They're both.
Kenny's on.
Water is eight hundred and forty-one thousand, eight seventy-seven. Uh, wastewater is seven fifty-five, six ninety-one.
I was close. Thanks, Kenny.
You're welcome.
Can I, can I?
Which was what? Uh, Kenny, if you would again, which was which?
Water is uh eight hundred and forty-one thousand, eight seventy-seven. Um, sewer is seven fifty-five, six ninety-one.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I? I assume capital budget voted favorable on, on the trucks and the other things that.
Unanimous.
And this is, this is an example. It's good to see that the actual time of bond capital improvement reports being. Being spun out of these, these, these uh retainers.
Just coming out of the.
Exactly what you're supposed to be doing.
Yeah.
That's right.
I'm good.
You're good? Article thirty-two, town hall scanner fodder.
Okay, so um, uh, this is part of uh, for, for town hall and really would be able to be used by all the departments of towns. Um, we don't have any mechanism of not only uh replicating for internal uh purposes, large plans, but we also don't have a means of um. Uh. Scanning them and putting them into electronic files. So therefore, uh, you know, just like um, we have the article for document management. Uh, we have uh plans that basically get rolled up, put in um vaults. Are not easily shared, uh need to then be brought to outside vendors to scan. Uh, this is uh similar to an article that I think was on the warrant a year and a half ago. And then pulled. Um, this was, I think, a fall twenty twenty-one town meeting. Um, so uh departments had identified this continues to be a uh request. Um, and therefore it is on there. I did get uh quotes and uh the price comes in at about twenty-three thousand. It's nineteen and change. And then the five-year service plan is an additional two thousand. I did have them run a price um on uh leasing, but because of now the interest rates. Uh, the total cost over sixty-month lease would end up being twenty-eight thousand dollars compared to um about twenty-three, nine hundred.
Steve Maureen?
The only question I. Have is this also would allow us, I think, or um, I guess is right, that we would have the benefit of being able to. Scan and publish on the website subdivision proposals and plans. So whether it's. Governor's Landing or some new project or a new development or. That gives people that are in the neighborhood or a butters or what have you much easier access to. View the actual plans that are out there versus have today. They've got to come into town hall if they want to see those plans. So.
Then we have to request the applicant provided electronic, our submission requirements. Um, don't make that a requirement. And also for approved uh plans that are already here on file or accepted streets. We don't have a way then to digitize and put them on without actually going to uh Kinko's or State's.
Yeah. Yeah, great. Okay. Thank you.
How big is the machine? Where's it, where's it going to go?
It would go in the land use code department. Basically, you're talking about a uh machine that is about um. Forty-eight, fifty-two inches wide. It takes the large sized plans, has a computer that's attached to it, so it'd become a network device. And is about four and a half feet tall. So it is a large piece of equipment.
Seems like it'll be difficult to get to Rio as well.
It's, it's all on a standalone, so we've. Already identified a corner that would go. My question would be, what does it take to run it? Is this something any employee is going to do? Does it cost to train someone on the unit? No, it's, it's pretty straightforward. Um, the software is very intuitive. It's really no different than the coffee machine. Um, and my last uh, uh town, we actually had that within the development department. Um, and it's just icon-based and then goes to uh file structure that allows for then uh. Departments to move them to the appropriate storage location for um internal storage or to be able to put up on the web. And I think we passed on this with capital budget, right?
It's not a capital.
Steve? Question?
Sean?
Okay. Article thirty-four, classification and compensation plan update.
Let me just first talk about this and then um Sandy's gonna sort of uh take it from there. Um. And I think one of the things from a policy standpoint, and we've seen this over the last. Um, nine months, um especially since I got here. Hopefully there's no correlation. Um, lots of stuff turnover and um people that retired. Um, left for other communities. And one of the things that, you know, we, we essentially found is that. Our existing compensation plan that basically um started back in two thousand and fourteen, that's when it was first. Done. Um, we're uh out of sync with not only internal equity for, for salary, but then also external. Um, so uh, you know, while we may want to say that we're more associated with, say, the men than the experts, we also. Labor within the four ninety-five corridor. And it's not trying to say that we're developing a plan to then um attract everyone to here. We just want to be somewhat competitive. And look at um, you know, compensation, not only on the police and fireside, but then internal town hall as well as. Uh, this is basically going to uh re, um, uh, it's going to update the uh, the work that was done in two thousand and fourteen. That significantly updated the job descriptions and developed a pay scale that then was implemented. Uh, partially in two thousand and seventeen and then twenty twenty-one. With merit and. Um, uh, step, the, the step process. Uh, so that this can basically just make sure that we're up to date. Uh, with um, you know, what has essentially changed over the last two and a half years, which has been significant changes. Uh, so. Um, Sandy can just mention about the, the process and, and then what uh? What sort of the, the basis for, for the, the cost is as well?
Um, we identified um. Today we have sixty-nine. Position, different types of positions. We have more employees, but um positions that um all were not included in the two thousand and fourteen study. So we want to include. Um, be all inclusive of all the positions. Um, like Joe had mentioned, um. The town wasn't immune from the pandemic era labor trend. Um, so we're not unique. Um, it's happening. We just want to stay. Um, current. Um, again, the plan was um developed over ten years ago, so I think it's, it's time to address it. Um. With the wage and step. Um, program that was initiated in two thousand and fourteen, we had a minimum, a maximum and a midpoint. And that's where you lived or died whenever you stood in two thousand and nineteen and twenty. That's when we put in the twelve steps. Ten years ago, we were hiring people in at step one and two. Today we're hiring people in at step six plus. So it's, it's changed. Um, we don't want to lose. Um. We want to be able to attract and retain employees. So we find. Feel that this is a good opportunity to do that now. Um, we'll put out an RFP. Um. And hopefully um, we put an ask in a forty K for the warrant. Um, more as a placeholder, I'm thinking it's going to come in probably closer to thirty or thirty-five based on the number of positions that will be evaluated. Um, but we want to get a true number before the town meeting and that way we can make an, hopefully make an adjustment down.
Thank you.
And, and just one thing, just wanna, wanna, just to reinforce it. Um, uh. We're not. Trying to, to, to come up with a salary range that then is basically, you know, like we're the highest in the area. This is just to identify, you know, sort of like where we are among some similarly, similarly sized communities. You can always find another community and employee can always find a community that then they can be paid more. We just want to make sure we're not so far out of whack that um, you know, there's large swings that someone can. Essentially for a comparable position, be increasing their salary by fifty percent. It just shows that we, we are then undervalued that position. If there's anything, I think the last six months have shown is that uh the need to, to be within. The ballpark so that we can retain people and we can try to work and find other ways to sort of make sure we keep them either through training, through. Uh, culture, through um, uh, other unique things that are unique to Upton rather than just looking at the dollar figure.
Questions?
Quick question.
Yeah.
Doesn't the market ultimately tell us that?
Now, we know we can't compete with the Woodlands and the Plymouths and Welsley's and so on and so forth.
Doesn't the market more or less tell us what, what a particular position is worth? Without spending forty thousand bucks?
That's where we find out the starting, uh, when, when someone is looking then to accept, they're also taking into consideration the position where they're leaving and they may, may, or other opportunities. They need the interviewing in multiple communities. You then look, okay, well, if I come to Optin, I'm coming in at step seven, I have five more steps. I don't have much runway. Community X, I'm coming in at step three, I have, you know, I uh, seven to ten more steps. I have that runway. They then can see where they're maxing out and that does happen in.
Okay. Is there some process by which we then take a plan like this and then look at all the folks that are existing employees of the town and say, hey, they're in this role, it was reclassified this way, we should be paying them twenty percent more. So that's where it happened last time and we did, like, we just did this five or six years ago and reclassified people and increased people salaries and made all the adjustments. And it was used for that purpose, much more so than like, uh, hey, this is how we're gonna make job offers and offer people salaries. It was kind of like that, hey, look, this is what the average is in the industry, we should pay our employees more.
So that is one of the things that could, could come out, but not necessarily. So um, in my last community, um, one of the first things I started working on was a cat class uh, and com- uh, class and compensation plan for, for Littleton. And there were positions where people fell outside of that range. Um, so uh, say a, a, a position where the top step, now when you shifted things, didn't even hit that step one. But if you had existing employees that were mid-grade and then when you reclassified it, they sort of fell down to step three, then you basically gave them more runway. You got sort of maybe a small little bump, but it wasn't to go from I'm a step five, now we shifted everything, so now I have to go to a step five. You still stay within the range. It's just now, instead of say being at the, at three-quarters of the way, maybe you're halfway. So that you have more runway going forward. But it doesn't necessarily mean that all of a sudden everyone is getting a twenty, thirty percent jump because we shifted that range. Really is where they fall. If someone is drastically being underpaid, that's an opportunity to bring that position up. But not necessarily something that happens across the board.
That's great.
I, I, I can remember, uh, you were around, I think, remember we used to use, maybe Mike Misha, maybe remember himself. He used to use, there were fourteen towns that we used and that, that was the, that was the criteria that we used, but he said, hey.
That spreadsheet, I bet it didn't cost forty thousand bucks.
But I gotta tell you, the last one, the last one, and we had people that were redlined. They were paid, they were being paid beyond what they were supposed to be, the recommendations that we had positions that were redlined and were paid more than what the class gave with the, 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 the company that came out to look at them. So they were held withheld raises for a long time.
Yeah.
So, but.
Only, only, it was only two or three people that were redlined in that study.
But I think there's two important things what I see going through the hiring process is, one, yeah, the market definitely dictates. And if our classification and compensation plan is old.
Yeah.
Can't compete because they're saying, well, this is where you come in, you're a new employee, you're at step, step one. And that's not where the market is. And the market's gone beyond that. So it's hard to get good people. And you need the flexibility to say, okay, we're taking you in, you have five years' experience in the field, we can start you at step five. We can start you at step six at a higher rate to begin with. So you gotta make sure you have that flexibility too.
Yeah. Yeah.
And I'd like to see in it is retention of the employees you have. You know, in other words, in that process, you should look at, you know, uh, that's a big key thing. We invested a lot of money in these people.
Right.
Um, and their experience and, and along with it's to pay, sometimes it's not just to pay.
Yeah.
You know, it's, you're, it's part of the process.
Yeah.
And I think also having a structured and transparent plan helps, gives employee um, the tools and, and shows that, you know, we're, we're trying to take care of them. It's the culture that we're trying to create and they want to stay.
It's interesting. I just always think we are, we're in a tough spot because we are surrounded by very wealthy towns. So in the case of, say, police and fire, I work on all staff. If someone wants to look to the West Burrows, the Hockintons, the North Burrows, et cetera, they're going to, you know, probably be able to increase their position and I don't know if there's all what you can do about that.
Hey, Joe and I had this conversation today. It's any one of my police officers that I have on my staff today could choose from about a dozen communities around us to go and work for tomorrow because everybody's hiring.
Any, any position in Town Hall could leave.
And, and that's, and that's, that's not gonna be, you know, that's gonna be something we experienced, but you know, it's not unique to us. And that's where, you know, we try to look for then other opportunities that, you know, some towns will allow for a little bit more flexibility with the work schedule. Some towns are moving to a four-day work schedule, so essentially ten nowadays. So that, you know, it sort of gives them a little bit more flexibility thinking, okay, just pound it out Monday through Thursday, Friday and so on. Municipalities need to think a little bit more creatively. So we're not gonna compete on a dollar per dollar basis. So we need to think of other areas and that's, that's things that are above and outside of the compensation.
And I think that we've done that in the last eight months. We've, we've tried to recognize a work-life balance. And um, we've done that with a lot of new employees and we're, we're working differently than we did ten years.
Question? You? Go ahead. Forty thousand dollars gets us a brand-new compensation plan? So whatever we had before is gone?
No, they, they'll review, uh, well, they'll review all our job descriptions to make sure that their ADA, FSLA, everything is legal. They'll also look at the internal equity as well as the external because we've added.
But it's a new, it, it wipes out what we had before. It's gonna be something brand-new.
It will be layered on top of what we already have.
And union and non-union, it's all?
All positions. We have a lot of positions that we, um, that are not included in the classification and um, code enforcement. They're not in the classification plan. Recreation is not in the classification plan. Fire is not in the class, all, um, not all the fires in the classification.
Whatever will be in this.
Yes, that's the sixty-nine position. So it's increased.
One of the challenges that you have with, with union that are in a classification system, but actually paid negotiated more, so they quickly fall out of that classification. I would say they're usually closer to market rate. Um, because the contract is renewed every three years and you're looking at, you know, the surrounding towns. So they fall out of that classification out of the rates more quickly. Yeah, I was actually thinking this whole thing was non-union and didn't include union, but that's why I suggested that. The classification, the grade, there is a correlation there with union, but it's, it's not always true.
It's not exact. It's not exact, but.
Sean? All right, my, I have, mine is more of an observation. How often do we, we do this? We do this thirty-three, four or five years?
We haven't done it since two thousand and fourteen. Um, we, we did a, we haven't done a true classification compensation plan in ten years.
How, how, how often? How often do you think you should do it?
Five.
Okay. It's recommended three to four.
Then if this is something that we do, uh, every three to five years, we do an evaluating, evaluation update and the assessors accumulate money over two or three years. Uh, we appropriate X amount of money for three years. That having been said, uh, budget issue, budget issue notwithstanding, going forward, I, I would suggest that perhaps we include this into an annual budget item so that uh, right now we, we're doing this today and it has no impact on, on the rate or the budget or anything. But when in fact, it is a true operational expense and it, it should be handled, it should be handled that way. So I said, budget issue notwithstanding, I, I understand we're not gonna do it this year, but you know, if you if you did it every three to five years, that kind of costs you forty thousand dollars, right? Or is, I, I don't know.
It may not because we may not, you may then alternate every other time for job positions or maybe more focused. But when you go ten years, we haven't um, updated those, that's when you're sort of just throwing everything.
I, I think, I think everybody understands where I'm.
Yeah, I think so. There are, there are very few occasions where we disagree, Mr. Flaherty, and this isn't one of them. I agree with you wholeheartedly. That makes a lot of sense.
So we're, we're, we're win one, loss one tonight. Is that what you're telling me?
Yeah, which puts us still way ahead of the game, Paul. Puts us still way ahead of the game. Nobody wins, but you, you are. You have seniority around me. All right, we are on the reserve, reserve fund transfer request. I think this is our last joint item.
So I believe Dennis is, is on there um, still, um, so uh, and, and hopefully you can um, also uh, receive the active information by, by looking at our, our packet. Uh, so um, uh, the, the reserve fund transfer request is for thirteen thousand. Um, on the form, understanding we need a data form, um, current balance of the uh, as of January thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, of the town uh, building expense uh, line is fifty-one thousand. However, we know with some of the, the same invoices that are associated with um, having plumbers come out as well as uh, anticipated and expected uh, maintenance for HVAC, all these others um, that the budget was never intended on um, doing this project. Uh, so that's why we're here before uh, FinHOM for reserve fund transfer. Um, you know, and also it's essentially an update uh, for, and like that handed over to Dennis so he can uh, review what the proposed uh, work would be.
Thank you. So we brought, we brought in um, uh, an engineer, plumbing engineer from Tyon Bond, pro bono. They were nice enough to, we told them we were having a problem with our plumbing at Town Hall. We asked if they could spare a good person and they gave us one and I appreciate that. And we took a look at all of the cammering that we did with Gustafson to look at the line, flush the lines. Gustafson's been out here, oh, I don't know, five, maybe six times over the past several months. About every other week or every two weeks, we've had, we've experienced a backup. And we were able to um, camera the lines during the backup to get to the bottom of it and discovered several interesting things. One is the backup occurs in the same location every single time. And it's not from a child flushing a toy or um, some other foreign object that doesn't belong in the line. It's simply a nature of um, the flushing of toilets that is backing up and, and it's a couple of reasons why this is, this is happening and as the engineers explained it to me. One is the pipes have gotten older and as they've gotten older, they've become more abrasive inside. Uh, and they needed to be cleaned. And uh, so they're, they're grabbing material as it's going down. Two, we have low-flush toilets. And low-flush toilets do two things. One is they only flush one point two-six gallons of water per flush. And two, they flush it very slowly, so they're very quiet. The problem is what we noticed with the camera line is that every time we flushed a toilet, the product moved about four or five feet. And then the water left the paper behind and the paper stayed. And then another flush and another flush and it would begin to back up right at the Y outside of the assessor's office where the men's room and the women's room come together with the line coming from the boiler room and the sink in the um, in the uh, lunchroom, uh, in the basement. So that, that was our culprit. Um, so we took a look at a couple of different things when we followed the recommendations of the, of the engineer. And one is last Friday, we had Gustafson come in with their diamond bit. Um, and they honed all the lines that are, that were causing the problem. So basically those lines are shined up like the day they were installed. They're nice and smooth. Um, so we should be able to get a little more velocity out of our flushes. Two, we cranked up the toilets as much as we could right now, just to give a little harder flush. But that's not going to really be a solution. The solution that both Gustafson and Tyon Bond feel would be to change out the water closets to a pressurized tank system. Um, and that's why the transfer that you see before you tonight is for the labor and materials associated with taking the seven uh, water closets that we currently have, the low-flush units and replacing them with pressurized tank systems that still only use one point two-six gallons of water. However, they're designed to put pressure in the line as they flush. And uh, the porcelain is designed with certain um, angled jets to create uh, much more turbulence when the toilet flushes so as to break up all of the paper product. And this will prevent us from having clogs in the future. In addition, and lastly, the, the engineers are recommending to make sure that we've got all possibilities covered is that we remove the um, the paper towel dispensers for your hand washing and put in um, air units. So that, that is not something that we have currently priced out or prepared for tonight's discussions. Tonight's discussions are strictly for the purchasing of the new water closet, seven of them, and the installation of those by Gustafson Plumbing. As well as we, we just, last Friday, we had all of the, the lines cleaned as I stated. This does not, this does not include tile work. We still are waiting for a quote on tile work. In other words, when they remove those current water closets, the line comes in through the bottom because they're standalone units. They're gonna be more of a traditional-looking unit now where they're gonna have a tank above the um, the toilet itself. So the water line is gonna come out in a different location and then have a, a shut-off right there, like you would traditionally see with a line going up to the tank to fill the tank up. Um, so we still need to get a price on the tile work and a price on replacing the towel dispensers with hand dryer, air dryers.
So my, my proposal with this would be this would, approval of this request would allow us to um, uh, have the plumbers place the water and then uh, we're told that it may take a couple of weeks. That would give us time at the next uh, maintenance committee to then come in with the final cost uh, as far as that tile work. Um, and um, you know, majority of the expense is gonna be within uh, the toilets and the plumbing work that's associated with that. So. Um, but we didn't want to delay giving authorization to the plumber. Um, wait for everything to be pulled together. So that's why it's sort of divided up in half.
Okay. Question on the board?
So, so, so what I'm hearing is you don't be sitting on that toilet when you push the button to flood, right?
I was gonna say alligator cracks and asphalt and porcelain jets. Time I talk to you, Mr. Westgate, you make me a little bit smarter. I appreciate that. Yeah, any other questions, comments on this one?
But you, you wanted, you want to do this now?
Yeah.
Just so you.
I, it's, it's the same supply chain issue. It may take a couple of weeks, so I want to get them going. And then we can come back with the final request once we nail down uh, tiles. So actually on this where I have installation of electric hand dryers and tile repair work, I'll just cross that off so that you can then sign that form. And then we'll come back for what really should be an incremental amount on top of that thirteen.
Good. Nick?
Questions?
No questions.
Steve?
Why wouldn't we approve like a fifteen number then you guys don't have to come back?
Um, never know what you guys have for questions, so. Because otherwise I'd, I'd ask that at twenty to make sure that then we were fine, but because this would at least start us and Dennis is working on the others, then at least we can be realistic in what we need. Tony, any questions here?
No, I think I've lost uh.
I, I kind of agree with.
What?
Sharon should pay for the tile work and blockwork?
That at least is something we can figure out. I wasn't sure if it was because um, you know, it's, it's part of the actual repair rather than say damage that was done. So, but everything should, I mean, it should. Everything should, I mean, it should always be assumed if there's a way we can save money on it, we absolutely will. So if there is anything that's covered by um by insurance. Um we will absolutely let FinCom know and we won't, wouldn't use the whole appropriation.
So is this you guys or?
It's them. It's just them.
Well, it it certainly is to the sudden unforeseen aspect of this. I I, you know, I kind of agree with Steve, you know. Give me a number and. And be done with it.
Dennis, do you have a number and then we can be done with it?
How much money do you have, Paul?
What?
I said, how much money do you have, Paul?
How much money do you need?
Fifty-one thousand dollars.
Sorry, I couldn't resist.
Well, don't forget now, gentlemen, there is, if you look at the quote, there's twenty percent contingency.
Yes.
So I'm not sure why you'd want to go twenty-one percent. You can always come back.
I don't think the twenty percent includes the paper towel. That's why I was adding.
Yeah. That, I mean, that's where it's like, I mean, it's, my thought is I'd be coming back with the remaining amount so that way you can then ask for that.
Fine. Good. Leave it that way. All right, the motion is through for thirteen thousand dollars from the reserve account. Second. Motion made in second. Any more discussion? No. Vote call vote, call Flaherty aye.
Yeah, let's go aye.
Sean? We're decided tomorrow. You want one of these or?
Yeah, you can sign it tomorrow.
Thank you.
Paul, you got to sign for Jonathan? He's on the bottom of the floor.
You guys.
Yeah, I know. We need, we need to update it.
So are you. I know.
That's why, that's why he's not holding papers. He's got his homework to do.
Burning two hats, you know?
All right, Brett, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
If there was a misunderstanding here, how we.
You and I will work very closely together to make sure that we're always on the.
Uh, may I just have at least one comment to make? With respect to the, with respect to the building committee, I don't know, somebody may know there is what they call a communication board. At the playground at Memorial School around the back for the. Children that that need assistance. Uh that came from a a grant that the PTA got from the Doug Flutie Foundation.
Yeah.
Uh the building committee, Steve Racketon in particular, reached out to the Doug Flutie Foundation to uh. See if we could get another one of them and they said, no, each town is allocated one sign. Uh, we reached out to Mike Howell, who was also on the building committee. To see, the cost is two hundred and fifty dollars and we reached out to Mike Howell. And he brought it to the men's club and they sprung for the two hundred and fifty dollars and. Uh he had the sign here tonight and I guess Matthew told them in the library that it will be hung on the fence uh. Come opening time of the new library. So uh I would ask that somehow the uh. Ask the board to write a note of thanks with appreciation to to the men's club if if I might.
Please, yeah, definitely. That's great.
And it's two hundred and fifty dollars and.
Another example that, I mean, yeah, for people that don't, I think everybody here probably recognizes the. The role the men's club plays in a lot of different ways and this is just another example of that. So that's great. Thanks for letting us.
All right, one more thing.
Anytime.
Were you paid for that out of CPC? Yeah, no, two hundred thousand.
Hey, if the men's club paid for it, it pays for it. That's our tax payer money.
Nine forty-five, Mr. Burn seconded. Vote call vote, call Flaherty aye.
Okay, guys.
Thank you.
Well, sir.
Get together. Make certain once things are lined up.
Do, see you later.
If I see you first.
Yeah. Next up, we have uh our resignation from the Economic Development Committee, Steve Racketon uh sent. Mr. Racketon uh serves on many, many uh boards and committees and most recently. On the economic development committee and you know, we can't say enough about all of the work that he's done for the town. All the volunteer hours on the economic development committee and in all of the other roles that he's been very active in. He's, you know. Been in town a very long time and is always engaged. Um so we're very grateful for his work on the economic development committee and all the other work he does and. Um it's it's with some sadness uh that we uh accept his resignation, but I will take a motion.
I got the motion.
I guess.
I was, I was going to mention, he's got to be on probably three other committees as well as this one, so.
Right. He's still very active and engaged, though. No doubt about that.
Yep, so. Uh I would make a motion that the board selectmen vote to accept the resignation of Stephen Racketon from the Economic Development Committee with regrets.
I'll second.
All is in favor. I'm in that section. Thank you. Have the minutes for the February twenty-first, twenty twenty-three meeting.
Yes.
All right, we will pass over that and next we can go into executive quest session. Chief, is there anything else we can do with or for you?
If I can get her to sign that document?
Oh, yes.
For sure. Yeah, so I know there was this one.
So the chairman signs.
Up here and you said there's another spot. Uh what's the date?
It's the seventh.
Seven, seven, twenty. And then you said a pedis.
It's one with mine and Susan Trinder's.
Yeah.
Here.
Is there another?
So then there's finish. Side, uh it's all.
Yeah. I was gonna say this, this is your first meeting, is it? Thought we were gonna have to uh have to start excusing people and escorting people out of this room.
Oh, nice.
I'm like, we haven't had one of those in a long time.
Paul would have been the first to go.
Yeah, no, yeah, me or Paul, both of us probably.
As they're all playing.
Oh, my goodness.
But these articles are already on the warrant.
We'll set up an agenda items to talk about that.
Well, we have to execute, right, and approve. I mean, typically speaking.
They're not on the warrant.
We shake a few off as we go. That's typically how it works with that residency.
And Joe getting Brussels. That's from getting. Mister Oz.
Well, we've, yeah. We haven't approved the warrant articles yet. But we will, we will do that.
Yeah.
Have a great.
You too. I'll send you a scanned copy, the signature for your files. Thank you. Thank you.
You bet. See ya.
Have a good evening.
Why don't we run?
Want me to motion?
Please, that'd be great.
Okay, it's our executive session. Okay. I move that the select board vote to enter into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law Chapters thirty A. Section twenty-one A and two, one B and Mass General Law Chapter four, section seven. To conduct strategy in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, director of public work. And to review the approved executive session meeting minutes and will not reconvene in open session. Stephen Metelli, aye?
Irene Duanelle, second.
Sign this aye? Irene Duanelle?
The second in Saint Mary.
It's a roll call. You have to say aye. Okay, we're good. Yeah, thank you.